...in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please note that all Commissioners are present this evening except Commissioner Schaefer and Vice Chair Mercado. Before we start, are there any changes to the order of the agenda? And I will mention that we have two public hearing items on the agenda tonight. One is for the 999 Third Street BioMarin project. The other is for 190 Mill Street, homeward bound. And I think staff may have some information for us related to the 190 Mill Street that may make an appropriate motion for continuance.
Yes, 190 Mill Street was scheduled for this agenda, but unfortunately, we were not able to complete the staff report in time. So, we are recommending continuance to February 11th. And so, my suggestion would be to move it up in the order in case there's anybody here from the public. We did try to notify anybody that we had had contact with, but it was too late to send out another notice. So, move it up in the agenda and make a motion to continue to February 11th Planning Commission meeting.
Hearing no objection from other Commissioners, we will call the 190 Mill Street item before the 999 Third Street item. I'll now discuss the proceedings for tonight's public hearings, of which there are two, the 999 Third Street and 190 Mill Street. We will begin with a staff report for each item. Then, we will hear from the applicant for approximately 10 minutes. With respect to the BioMarin Whistlestop, we have two applicants, so we may extend that time a little bit to allow each applicant to present. Members of the public will be invited to speak. And if you are, and if you do desire to speak during the public comment period, we would ask that you identify yourself so we know who you are. And then, before you leave the lectern area, if you'll please, assign us. We have a record of who's spoken. And then, the Commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff, of the applicant, or of members of the public following each of those segment presentations. The public hearing will then be closed and will bring the matter back to the Commission for deliberations and potential vote on the recommendations of staff. Next item, is there, are there any, is there anyone who wishes to speak on a matter of urgent necessity that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of January 14. Are there any comments about those minutes or a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Then, move and second, and did all in favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. So, now can call the matter of the 190 Mill Street, which is on the agenda. We've changed the order now here. And I'd like to know if any, if I can hear a motion from a Commissioner to continue that matter to a date certain, which is, remind me again, please.
February 11th.
February 11th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? There being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. I'll now call the matter of 999 Third Street, the BioMarin Research and Development Buildings and the Whistlestop Senior Center. There are several items that will be before the Planning Commission this evening for its deliberation and action, and we'll address those through the staff and as the proceedings progress. So, I would call on the staff to make its presentation, if you will, please.
Thank you, Chair Schopert. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Sean Kennings, a contract planner who's been working on this project. So, go ahead, Sean, thanks.
Chair Schopert, members of the Commission, Sean Kennings with LAK Associates on the Contract Planner. I'm going to do a real quick presentation. This is actually the seventh time that we presented this project to you. So, I don't really want to dwell on stuff. Obviously, we can answer questions if you have them. To my right here is Amy Skuescox, who is our environmental consultant, who prepared the EIR for the project. Again, we're going to sort of summarize a lot of that document, but she's here to answer questions as well. So, again, 999 Third Street, this is a joint project between BioMarin and Whistlestop and Eden Housing. As you know, the site's between Second and Third Street and Lindaro and Brooks. It's 133,000 square feet. BioMarin is going to develop 118,000 square feet, and Whistlestop will develop 15,000 square feet in the northwest corner. Quick history, BioMarin bought the property in 2015. They did conceptual reviews between both the Planning Commission and the DRB, formal application in 2018. Most of, in 2019, we completed the environmental document, including notice of preparation. Draft EIR was published in August, and the final EIR was published in January of this year. There was a Planning Commission Study Session Review, the basic merits of the entitlements, including the General Plan Amendment, zoning text amendment, and the design review permits. The DRB Design Review Board has reviewed the project at a formal hearing in June and again in August 2019. And again, there was a Planning Commission hearing in September of 2019 to go over the draft environmental impact report. Real quick, the project again, 118,000 square feet for BioMarin, two four-story buildings, 72 feet in height, as measured by the California Building Code. These are laboratory and research development buildings with office and amenities. They have large floor plates to accommodate the needs for laboratory facilities. BioMarin's project will be built in two phases, Building A and Building B, with an amenities component in between the two buildings. After the project is built, there will be 29 parking spaces as part of BioMarin's facility. It's in the downtown parking district, so they have an exemption for up to one FAR. We can discuss that later. Whistlestop Eden Housing component is built on the 15,000 square feet in the northwest corner. It's a six-story building. First and second floors is the healthy aging campus for Whistlestop. Third through sixth floors is 67 units of affordable senior housing. One of those is the manager's unit, built by Eden Housing. And there'll be 12 parking spaces on the ground floor, one of those for the manager's unit. This is the site plan after full build-out. Again, Building A and Building B, the two BioMarin buildings, parking to the southwest corner, and then this Whistlestop Eden Housing project at the northwest corner. Here's sort of the architectural renderings. Again, I'm not going to really go into this. The applicant has some slides. If anyone wants to talk about the architecture, the massing, those components, we do have those slides for later. This is the Whistlestop Eden Housing massing, as seen from Third and Brooks. The project was reviewed by the Design Review Board in June of last year. The project was generally well-received with a recommendation for approval pending some changes. Those changes were addressed at a August 2019 hearing. The DRB found that the project was consistent with the general plan, recommended approval for height, mass, bulk. The design aesthetic was consistent with the downtown neighboring buildings, and the landscape plan was reviewed and approved. It carried a 501 vote approval, and there was absent vote with recommendation to your Commission for approval. Here are some of the changes that were required for August. Essentially, additional landscaping in the northeast corner for BioMarin. That's seen here with some of the lighter colored trees up there in the top-right corner, and some requirements for the front porch to have more access. The front porch is the public space at the front of the building at Lindaro and Third. The front porch modifications, I don't know if my little pointer works here, but there's an access off the corner there. You can see a little pedestrian walking into the front porch. There were some design elements that BioMarin modified to be more consistent, and then they added some more landscaping. Whistlestop had presented at their, at the August hearing, a facade that had no bay windows and had some different window mullions. These were actually asked to be sort of modified again. So, in this slide, you can see that the upper portion, A, is staying the same, sort of a reduction in the articulation of the upper story. But, Component B, which is the bay windows, are going to be returned back to the facade on Third Street. And again, the lower sill windows, they asked those to be added back in. And again, the project architect for Whistlestop Eden Housing is here, if you have questions regarding that. Real quick, the sequel process. We filed a notice of preparation last February. We had a scoping hearing to go over the issues in the EIR. The draft environmental document was published in August, 45-day comment review period. Response to documents was prepared last fall, with the final being published in January of this year. In that environmental document, obviously, there are several topic areas that were reviewed. Some of the topic areas had no impacts, therefore, no mitigations. Those included aesthetics, energy, greenhouse gas, emissions, public services, recreation, tribal, cultural, and utilities and services. Some of the topic areas required mitigation measures to reduce impacts to less than significant. I'm not really going to get into those, but if you have questions regarding them, we'll do so. A lot of those are construction-related impacts, such as air quality, noise, geology in soils, hazardous materials during the construction period. Some of them are operational, such as transportation and noise for operations of the facility. There are four impact areas in the draft environmental document that could not be mitigated. There is no feasible mitigation for these issues, and they all surround traffic impacts in the downtown area. So, the impact land use, one, requires certain infrastructure to be implemented before you have a project. In this case, since there is no mitigation for those traffic impacts, there's inconsistency with land use policy, too. The three traffic impacts essentially contribute to a worsening of the level of service in the downtown area. One at the intersection of Mission and US Southbound 101, one at Third and Hetherton and D Street, and again, at Tamalpais and Third. And essentially, this is creating delays in queuing, delays in vehicle capacity, and delays in levels of service. Because of these significant unavoidable, oh, excuse me, as part of the EIR, we go through analysis of the alternatives. These are the four that were chosen to be reviewed. The no-project alternative, which is no development of the site. The reduced-scale alternative was a reduced project for BioMarin, which essentially dropped their total development square footage in about half. And this eliminated the majority of the traffic impacts, but not all of them. The third alternative was a code-compliant BioMarin project, which would require no general plan amendments and no text amendments to the zoning, so consistent with the height and FAR requirements for the site. But this alternative also required Whistlestop to build their project at their Tamalpais location. The fourth alternative was a code-compliant BioMarin project on the site, with Whistlestop on the site. So, it's a smaller BioMarin buildings, but still Whistlestop. Through that evaluation of the alternatives, the EIR has to address what would be what's called the environmentally superior alternative. And this is an assessment under the SEQA guidelines to develop a project or understand a project that would have, that would be better than essentially the proposed project. Now, obviously, Alternative Two was determined as being the superior alternative. It reduces the local traffic congestion, slightly reduce visual impacts, and it would retain that Whistlestop project on-site. However, Alternative Two does not meet the primary objective of the applicant's, which is to develop the necessary square footage in downtown and to provide the Whistlestop Eden Housing facility. And specifically, if BioMarin doesn't build this project, then Whistlestop has no opportunity to build this project either, because the opportunity just would not exist. So, even though this is the environmentally superior alternative, as you can see in the staff report, and if you have any questions, staff does not recommend selection of that alternative. So, as part of that EIR process, we received only six comment letters. We only had one oral comment at the Planning Commission hearing in September of last year. Amy's team prepared response to documents. There were no master responses, so no sort of issues of great concern that covered all topic areas. There were some minor text changes, which is in the final EIR, response to comment document. The final EIR, or the response to comment document and the draft EIR constitute the final EIR, which is one of the action items for you tonight to recommend adoption. So, getting back to both the significant unavoidable and the superior alternative, in order for the project to be approved and for the EIR to be certified, the Commission would have to make a recommendation to adopt a statement of override. So, the statement of override requires a ruling by the governing bodies to come up with the basis for why the project should be approved. That includes public benefits and other considerations. And so, as part of that, the applicant had proposed certain terms in their development agreement. They're asking for development agreement to build this project over phases, a 10-year timeframe, certain timelines for schedule of construction. They're asking for a requirement to remove a pedestrian connection behind the parking structure at 788 Lincoln. They're asking for relocation of conference space from a specific space to any spaces throughout their facilities, and freezing of the impact fees. As part of that requested DA terms, they're providing these public benefits. Furtherance of the city goals and policies, this project will be consistent with the general plan after the amendments. It's a redevelopment of a downtown infill property, one that's desired and contemplated by the general plan. It's sustainable development, located near transit and freeway. There's the donation of the development area to Whistlestop. Voluntary monetary contribution for shuttle services in the amount of $400,000 over the term of the development agreement. Monetary contribution for signal synchronization in the downtown area. That's a $500,000 contribution. They remediated the site in accordance with the Department of Toxic. That's the white tent that was on the property for the last several months. So, that way, once it's remediated, you can have housing on the part where Whistlestop is proposing. There's a leaseback donation for Whistlestop. Again, the meeting space, the urban open space, the corner of Third and Lindaro, contribution to the pedestrian bicycle safety. Environment is also proposing temporary public parking on the property during the phasing and before the site is built out. So, again, getting back to the entitlements tonight, in order to approve the project and to recommend adoption of the FEIR, you have to make a recommendation for a statement of override and consideration. And the Commission's recommending, essentially, the Commission finds that on balance, the benefits of the project outweigh the significant unavoidable environmental impacts to traffic in the downtown area. And again, the applicant's term sheet has provided those public benefits. So, happy to go through those if you have questions. We received one additional letter today. It's on the dais from Sustainable Santa Fel. I believe that the gist of it is objecting to the removal of that public path behind the parking structure. And then, one email in support. Those are the only two public comment letters that we received before this hearing. So, in conclusion, staffers recommending approval of the project. As we said, it's consistent with the general plan. It's a redevelopment infill property, future growth for BioMarin, a major employer in the downtown. It will have, we think, off, supporting downtown activity in businesses. It will be a great benefit to the downtown. It's facilitating the relocation of Whistlestop and Eden Housing to this location, which is something that's been a long time in the works, which is also sort of promoting a longtime Santa Fel employer and company in the downtown. They're proposing those construction interstruction improvements, providing the monetary benefits, sustainable development. And so, I'll turn it over to Rafi real quick. These are the discussion topics for what your actions are tonight. And there's a graphic sort of explaining it further.
Thank you, Sean. So, good evening, Commissioners. So, the, what we have here is we have our suggested kind of format for how to proceed in your deliberations. And so, following staff presentation and applicant presentation, open the public hearing, accept public testimony, close the hearing, and review and discuss the final EIR, including the impacts and statement of overriding considerations. And then, there are seven draft resolutions before you this evening. Should you decide after deliberation to make a recommendation for the project to the council? And our suggestion would be to take them in this order, that they're listed there as they're listed in your staff report, and start with the recommendation to certify the EIR first, then adopt the SEQA findings, including the overriding considerations and the mitigation monitoring reporting program, and then adoption of the, recommended adoption of the general plan amendment, followed by the text amendment, followed by the PD rezoning, and then a recommendation, recommending adoption of the development agreement, and finally, the actual entitlements, the design review, use permit, small subdivision assigned program. Couple notes on a, a couple of these actions by the Commission's rules and procedures are, require a majority of the entire Commission, regardless of how many Commissioners are present. So, specifically, the general plan amendment action, the zoning text amendment action, and the PD rezoning would require four affirmative votes of the Commission in order to pass. So, that's a little different than the other entitlements, which just require a majority of those present. And there are options that were listed in your staff report. If there is different direction that the Commission wants to go, there are four different options that we had provided. And based on deliberation, if there's kind of a different direction, we can also provide some feedback on that. This last slide is, I don't know if it's helpful or confusing. We think it's helpful, but it's a chart that tries to show kind of the action and kind of the sequence of what should be done. So, the first real action is on the final EIR, and that's really the first question. And the question that has to be answered in order for the Commission to adopt and certify or recommend certification is, was the correct process followed? Did the final EIR answer questions raised in the scoping and draft processes? And that's that. And that can be done regardless of whether a project's approved or not. It's just the sequel process was followed. The second one is what we call crossover in the nice green color. And what that one is, is that's the overriding consideration, SEQA finding the facts. So, that recommendation for that resolution only would be done if, passed, if you find that the project benefits outweigh its impacts. And then, the items in the yellow are all the things that would be done to approve the project as presented, and those are all the other resolutions. So, we can have this sheet up there for you during deliberation to kind of help you see it, as well as the kind of the order in which to do it. That will be, that will be helpful for you. So, with that, that concludes our presentation, and I'm sure there'll be some questions to answer.
Any of the Commissioners have questions of staff at this point? And if you do have questions, could you limit them to questions and reserve to a later time comments on the merits?
Okay, I'll jump in. Did Public Works or the project manager or whoever, the removal of the Brooks Street crosswalk across Third that exists now, there was a ton of discussion, but that goes away, does it not?
If I'm not mistaken, that's one of the mitigation measures requirement for the Whistlestop component of the project. And I think it's reflected in the entitlements component, the conditions of approval.
So, what had happened is there used to be a uncontrolled, just a crosswalk there years ago. It was actually removed. That question of was looked at in the draft EIR, and there was a draft mitigation measure included in the draft EIR that required a crosswalk to be put back in, given the increased activity in this area, and that that crosswalk be a pedestrian, include a pedestrian beacon. During the draft EIR public hearing, we did receive some comments from the applicant's team about the necessity for that, putting that improvement back in, especially since the crosswalk was taken out. That question was answered in the final EIR by our city's traffic engineers and the EIR preparers. So, if you want some more specifics on that, we can have the EIR traffic consultant come up to explain the reasons for why it's being included back in to have a crosswalk.
So, it is back in?
Yeah.
That's why we're going around and round. Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure if, who is the correct person to ask this question of, but as I understood, the traffic study is that it attempted to take into account the implications of the train going through Santa Fel and going to Lurkspur. That it did that sort of as a, it planned, tried to project and plan for it, since it was done before the train actually started to run. And I'm just wondering if those projections of its impact are reflected in reality now that it is running.
Maybe we could have Mr. Parisi?
Yeah, we have David Parisi here, who's the traffic engineer, and maybe David can just come up to the podium and address this.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Parisi, Parisi Transportation Consulting. Our firm did a peer review of the comprehensive traffic study that was done by the applicant's traffic engineers. That traffic study did include forecasts, forecasted traffic conditions as well as delays to Second and Third Street, streets based on smart crossings. And all, the impacts were considered, you know, with the train in place. Based on my observations, the conditions are pretty accurate. So, the impacts that were projected do seem to be appropriate. Back to the previous question about Brooks, real quick, if you would like.
Please.
Sure. There used to be a crosswalk there that was marked with just two stripes across the street. There was no beacon or traffic signal. That was removed, and instead, because there was three lanes of traffic going by at pretty high speeds, and there are still pedestrians crossing, some barriers were installed. Even without the project, there's people that are still trying to cross at that location. With both the projects, BioMarin and Whistlestop, we would anticipate increased demand for pedestrians across the street, particularly with all the destinations and whatnot in downtown Santa Fel. So, what the recommendation is for a mitigation measure is a high-visibility crosswalk, ladder style with bars and good, high-visibility signing, and what's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon, which would actually be a signal that a pedestrian would push, the light would turn red, pedestrians would get a walk light to go across. It would be synchronized with the traffic lights along Third Street. So, there'd be no additional delay to traffic.
Thank you. Questions from other Commissioners?
Yeah, with regards to sort of further efforts of re-timing lights, I know that they had mentioned in the DA proposal, I think it was $500,000 for that. What would be the total estimated cost, all in, for that?
Hi there, Josh Menjol, Public Works. So, are you asking for total synchronization downtown entirely or just a corridor? Because we have the Third Street project, which is projected around 12 million, I think.
To help me better understand, the 500,000 was for the corridor or was it for total downtown?
It's a contribution to use for synchronization. It's a contribution to use for synchronization as a part of that. So the rehabilitation would include a whole lot of other improvements, whereas synchronization is focused more on the signals and their communication and the timing mechanisms.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Commissioner Davis, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. First, could you please remind me which of the four resolutions require four votes for passage? I've got the, the general plan, recommending approval of the general plan amendment, recommending adoption of the PD zoning, and what was the other one?
So it's resolutions exhibits two C, two D, two E, and two F. The general plan amendment, zoning text amendment, PD rezoning, and development agreement.
Thank you. I have a question about, since this is a, this is a somewhat unusual project in that we have two different proposed developments coming in under the, the same application. And for much of the merits discussion, including the adoption of the statement of overriding concerns, the, we are justifying our actions in approving the development with respect to the BioMarin campus, in part based on the provision of the affordable housing and senior aging services by Whistlestop. And my question for staff is, is there anything in the documents as they now exist, or is it contemplated that there will be included in the development agreement? Anything that would affect the remaining entitlements with respect to the BioMarin portion of the development, if in fact Whistlestop did not move forward and complete the, the build out of its approved portion of the project?
That's a very good question. So typically, when city grants approvals, we grant approvals for a term during which period a project would have to obtain subsequent approvals, such as building permits and construction permits, to vest and initiate their approval. So we don't actually put a shorter, like milestone, you have to do it by this date or this date unless it's a code enforcement type action where they had done some illegal work that has to be removed. So in this particular case, you're correct, there isn't anything currently in the draft documents that would put a more finite limit on when the Whistlestop portion of the project would have to be, I guess, subdivided and turned over to Whistlestop so that they could do their piece. I think the applicant that might be able to provide some insight, they may have some private deals that they have between the two parties that may have some specific, some specified timelines. I think if it were to be added, some sort of milestone to say that's, the property needs to be transferred and over to Whistlestop or done by a certain date, that's something that would be most appropriate for the development agreement, I think, is it where that, something a condition such as that could land. But you may want to see if the applicant, either BioMarin or Whistlestop, has anything to add to that that may address that concern.
Thank you. And that's sort of a segue into my next question, which is, what's all this development agreement stuff? And we don't deal with that frequently. I'm not sure what the commission's role is in the development agreement. I don't know to what extent the terms have been subject to some kind of pre-negotiation or if there's some understanding about where it will end up, if it's just the term sheet that we're recommending approval of. Can you maybe provide us a little bit of education about what are, what the process is and what the commission's role is in making recommendations with respect to entering into a development agreement?
Another good question. So the high level answer is that a development agreement is a contract between a government entity, a city, county, and a private developer to, to offer certain, where a developer can ask for certain benefits or terms for their project. Most, most commonly, it includes a longer timeframe to have their project approvals in place. A lot of times, it includes freezing of fees. In the old days, it also used to include freezing of the development standards that are in place today over the 10-year term, so that if the city were to say, adopt a new general plan that changed the rules, that wouldn't affect their project. So it's a contract, it's done by ordinance, and the city does have a resolution that establishes the procedure for considering development agreements. And as with many projects that include development type activity, the planning commission is asked to weigh in, and your role is to recommend that the development agreement is consistent with the general plan. So that's pretty much your scope. In terms of how the development agreement is negotiated, it's ultimately a contract, so it has to be adopted by the council, and as I said, it's done by ordinance. So the usual process is that executive staff in the city, city manager, community development director, public works director, would receive a draft development agreement, review it with the city attorney, they would then in turn meet with the developer, there'd be some negotiations on the terms and the benefits proposed, and that draft would then proceed to the planning commission, and then ultimately the council, and the council would have the ultimate say whether they want to enter a development agreement or not. You're correct, the city has not done many development agreements. The last two before this one was Northgate Mall, back when they did the kind of exterior renovation, and there was some demolition of space, and they exceeded the current floor area limits, and they wanted to preserve the right to build that back over years, so the city entered into a development agreement with Northgate Mall. And the prior one before that was Fair Isaac for the original development of the San Rafael Corporate Center, which also had a, basically a similar request for a 10-year term and the freezing of the fees. So those are the last two we've done. In this particular case, we did have internal staff review of the development agreement. We met with the developer, BioMarin in this case, it only affects the BioMarin property, had a lot of discussions. This, this is a fairly high-profile project, so the council also got involved. The council had a subcommittee that was appointed to review the terms of development agreement. They reviewed it, they provided some back and forth. There was also a, a full meeting of the council that occurred on January 6th, where they reviewed the term sheet, provided some feedback as a whole council, back to the subcommittee who then further discussed it with the, with the developer. And this is, this term sheet that's before you is what's kind of been currently proposed. So the ultimate, your, your role would be to just recommend that the, the terms, the project, and the benefits are consistent with the general plan and the, and the goals of the city, and then the council would have ultimate action to enter into that contract.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners before we move on to the applicant's presentation?
I did have one more question. Remind me of the two previous approvals that BioMarin has been granted that are still valid and out there.
So in 2015, BioMarin received approval for a, I think a 73,000 square foot office and laboratory building, sort of similar, but it was a, it's kind of a funny shape due to some of the constrictions specific to PG&E easements on that site. And that's the property there, 755 Lindaro in the lower left-hand corner. The, the entitlement also required them to put a parking structure extension, that's that little component there, to make up for what was then the parking requirement for the whole campus at the time, and that's using that 3.3 per thousand square foot ratio. So as part of this new development agreement and expanded PD, they would be retaining both the entitlements for both those structures, as well as the two new buildings, but blending the parking ratio as described in the, in the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? I'll invite the applicant or applicants to approach and give us a presentation.
You'll have to forgive me, I've had a new knee since we last met, so that's why I'm hobbling up here. A lot can happen in between these meetings. Well, good evening, planning commissioners, and thank you for your time. I'm Joe O'Hare, the CEO with Whistlestop. And during the applicant's presentation segment of this session, I am joined by Shar Zamankor, who's Director of Planning, Campus Planning and Design with BioMarin. Representing Eden Housing is Susie Chrisimonya, who's the Senior Development, Senior Director for Real Estate Development. And as mentioned, we have our representatives from the two architectural firms, Van Meter Williams &amp; Pollak and Johnson &amp; Fain here with us this evening to help ask any, answer any questions that the commissioners may have. We also want to acknowledge and thank the individuals in the audience tonight who are here to voice their support for our project. We are grateful for them taking the time and show the community's support for this project. We're going to focus our remarks on the community benefits that will be provided to the City of San Rafael and the community because of this project. This project is just not about bricks and mortar. All three organizations, BioMarin, Eden Housing, and Whistlestop have important health and human needs served missions to improve, enhance, and extend the lives of thousands of individuals, young and old, that need our help. Let's first take a look at the Whistlestop Eden Housing component of this project. And you see it up on the screen. As a reminder, the community and elected officials told us they loved our project, but could we find somewhere else to build it, other than our current location at 930 Tamaulipas? And thanks to the collaborative efforts with BioMarin, we have the right location. They have generously stepped up and supported us, and we are grateful for our partnership with them. BioMarin, Whistlestop, Eden Housing, and the City of San Rafael's planning department staff have been working together for over three years on this joint application. A considerable amount of time, money, human capital, and professional expertise has been invested in this complex process. We are in full support of BioMarin's most recent development agreement proposal terms, especially their commitment to provide Whistlestop the portion of the 999 Third Street property for the development of our new healthy aging campus with affordable senior housing. Thanks to BioMarin, Whistlestop, and Eden Housing will be able to provide this new valuable community's resource to the City of San Rafael's rapidly growing older adult population, especially to offer 67 units of new, safe, and 100% affordable housing, together with a new 18,000 square foot state-of-the-art healthy aging center and integrated care facility. By 2030, it is estimated that more than one in every three Marin residents will be over the age of 65, and the fastest-growing sector of the population will be over 85. Meeting the needs of this growing demographic will require a variety of improvements in housing, healthcare, nutrition, and transportation, as well as new models for providing vital services such as social connection, referral sources, and engagement. There is no debate about the desperate shortage of affordable housing and other services for older adults in Marin. As the aging population continues to grow, these challenges will only become more pronounced. It is time for a community-based solution to this growing community crisis. Whistlestop's proposed solution is the new healthy aging campus, a modern health hub for Marin's older adults, that will support the social and medical needs of older adults and provide affordable homes, accessible transportation, and a myriad of vibrant programs designed to improve human connectedness in a central community-based location. The social and medical services provided at this campus will be available to all of Marin's older adults, not just to those who live on site. The recent report, Older Adult Housing in Marin Planning for 2030, estimates that approximately 7,000 older residents in Marin currently need affordable housing. This affordable housing project will be the first of its kind in Marin County, and will feature community rooms, a computer center, library, landscaped courtyards with gardens. The campus will also be San Rafael's first car-free community, as services and amenities will be walkable, and transportation will provide, be provided by Whistlestop for its residents and members. Whistlestop will be partnering with the local healthcare payers and providers in creating a modern health hub and integrating care, and an integrated care clinic at our new campus. Providing wraparound healthcare services will allow Whistlestop to more effectively address specific needs and will prove, will improve health and outcomes for older adults in San Rafael. Social isolation is an epidemic sweeping our country. Those who are isolated are in an increased risk of depression, cognitive decline, and dementia, among other health conditions. The new campus, Whistlestop Campus, located in downtown San Rafael, will be a welcoming central hub for residents and members where they can share meals, attend classes, and engage in conversations and activities with contemporaries, all designed to increase physical and mental wellness. The Healthy Aging Campus will also contribute to community vitality by moving isolated older residents out of their homes and into a supportive environment, and integrating older residents into the thriving downtown San Rafael area. The project will contribute to the economic development, sustainability, and viability, and vitality of downtown San Rafael. It's a logical, cost-effective, innovative plan that responds to two of the most in-demand services in Marin: affordable housing and healthy aging. It's time to start treating aging as a community responsibility. The project is currently estimated to cost around approximately $48 million, of which 38 million is for the construction of 67 affordable housing units. There is a sense of urgency associated with the housing financing component because of state and other affordable housing funding opportunities Eden Housing will need to pursue as soon as possible. We're looking to bring over $25 million in outside funding into the City of San Rafael to help address its affordable housing element. Eden Housing cannot yet apply for this significant funding availability until we have entitled approvals from the City of San Rafael. Applications for the several of the state's affordable housing funding have begun this month. The Healthy Aging Center is projected to cost around $10 million. Whistlestop has been running a capital campaign for the past three years, and has been successful in reaching the $10 million goal, thanks to the community's support from Marin Community Foundation and dozens of generous individuals who believe and are committed to this critically important project. The majority of capital campaign gifts are multi-year pledges, monthly year pledges, with funding received based upon the achievement of certain project milestones, of which the most significant in obtaining this money and funding is obtaining entitlement approval from the City of San Rafael as soon as possible. The community is in full support of this project and are looking to the San Rafael Planning Commission to help move this project towards entitlement approvals as soon as possible. Thank you, and it is my pleasure now to turn the presentation over to Shar Zamankor.
I am Shar Zamankor and have been in front of you many, many times.
I think you need to be a little closer to the mic.
Can you hear me now? Right. Since we've been in front of you many, many times, the staff has asked us to keep our presentation short and focused tonight, but please feel free to ask any questions afterwards. We're here with the team if you have any questions. As you know, BioMarin was founded 23 years ago in Marin and moved to San Rafael in, its headquarters to San Rafael in 2014. BioMarin is focused on rare genetic diseases that mainly impacts children. Our proposed campus expansion confirms BioMarin's long-term commitment to San Rafael by not only enhancing downtown and its connectivity to neighboring communities, but also many other significant offerings, including remediation and cleanup of a brown field located in the heart of downtown. We completed the demolition of the two buildings that you see on, on this Google, old Google image last year, and completed the cleanup and remediation of the western portion of the site. We anticipate DTSC approval and site certification in 2020. The second phase of the remediation alone cost over $15 million, and it generated over $6 million spent in local businesses for items such as meals, lodging, permits, et cetera. As agreed upon with the city council, until we start construction on the first building, BioMarin allows the city to use most of the parcel, which excludes... BioMarin allows the city to use most of the parcel, which excludes the Whistlestop portion, for public parking or other ancillary uses such as farmers' markets or food trucks as city sees appropriate. As Sean mentioned, the proposed is a transit-oriented development, as it is less than quarter of a mile from the Smart Station and downtown. An opportunity to optimize development focused on reducing traffic by encouraging use of public transportation, a comprehensive TDM program, careful management of parking and addition of bike lanes. Furthermore, as agreed upon with the city council, BioMarin will contribute $900,000 to the City of San Rafael for implementing traffic improvement measures that I believe Rafi mentioned earlier. Joe noted that another significant benefit of our project is enabling relocation and expansion of Whistlestop and highly-needed affordable senior housing in a prime location with easy access to downtown services, as well as a donation of $1.2 million of land Amongst other community benefits that the development offers, it provides 3,500 square feet of retail space and 6,000 square feet of a landscape plaza that we call the front porch at the corner of Third and Lindoro, which is open to public free use. The front porch will not only start activation of Third Street as a vibrant downtown corridor, but also will provide a public oasis at a very busy intersection. As safety is focus of BioMarin, the proposed project will significantly improve sidewalks and crosswalks as it relates to Lindoro, Second and Third Street. You can get a glimpse of the project, including the front porch, from downtown and the Fourth Street. This is through Lutens. We are now at the corner of Second and Lindoro. The tall redwood trees will complement the buildings and provide an enhanced experience for cars, as well as pedestrians along Lindoro and in that intersection. This is a closer up of the walkway towards the buildings from Second Street, the redwood grove, which provides a unique Marin experience for pedestrians that are walking on Lindoro. Here is a closer view of Retail and the front porch, the public plaza, from south, southern view. The plaza has access from both sides, both from the Third Street side, as Sean showed you on the other drawing, as well as from Lindoro side, easily accessible. And finally, the view along Lindoro captures the architectural sophistication that the buildings offer as a gateway to downtown San Rafael. This project has a potential to not only provide a landmark in downtown, but also, as the staff captured earlier, it offers significant community benefits. We hope we have your support in moving our development forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions of either or both of the applicants at this time?
I'll jump in, I guess.
Commissioner Lubomirski.
Thanks. You just mentioned Retail. Would that be like a cafe off the front porch? Or what is the retail?
Yes, that's what we were thinking, somewhere to go grab a cup of coffee, a sandwich, a cup of soup. Yeah.
Well, and I love the redwoods, love the redwoods. When do you expect, I mean, in a perfect world, when would Building B be completed? Or, I know it's hard for you to say, but do you have an idea?
I have, I really don't have any idea. What we know, that I can share with you, is what staff mentioned. So, we are requesting a development agreement to get flexibility. And the reason that we need this, these buildings approved now instead of later in, number one was getting ready for Whistlestop and Eden Housing to build their project. That was our main objective. But additionally, be ready to build when the need arises. So, for our company, when a drug gets approved and a treatment gets approved, we need to be ready to immediately bring onboard space as needed for employees. So, this allows us that flexibility. And we are hoping that we build the first building within the first six years, and hopefully the second building within the next four years after that, and hopefully the third building within that timeframe.
I noticed in the, in the temp, well, not temporary, in the parking lot where the footprint of B will be, you have live oak trees in the, between the, that's...
You know, we are going to put a small trees because they're required for a temporary parking lot, according to the current codes. I'm very much in agreement with you. Trees are hard to relocate, but we, we are hoping for the trees that are along the streets will be there long-term. Any trees that get impacted by the second phase of the project, we'll make sure to be very mindful about what we add and how we go about it.
And one of the things you asked was removing access to the creek, Mayhann Creek, around the parking structure. What's the reason for that?
So, currently, as you know, there is a walkway on the other side, on the southern, eastern side of the creek. And with the approval of the parking structure and the first building, there was this new walkway, repeating the same walkway on the other side of the creek was proposed. As you noted on the site plan that Rafi shared with you, this walkway mostly goes behind the two tall parking structures with very little public visibility. And considering all the safety issues that we all know of that are happening in the current walkway, on the more visible side, in addition to what we have experienced on our campus past several years, it's of serious concern to have pedestrians walk back there. It's mainly for pedestrian safety reasons that we are requesting removal of that condition.
Okay. What, what have you done to address, or what issues, I think I have an idea, but what issues have you had on the existing pathway?
So, the existing pathway that is within, so there is an area, we have a park right now that's open to public, and there is a walkway that we have. Our head of security usually provides a quarterly report of the safety, and there's been many incidents with the transients and, you know, things that they find, and it's really uncomfortable walking at night. I also heard in conversations with the staff that the police department has also, is aware of some of the issues on the other, on the walkway on the eastern side of the creek due to transient and the nature of, you know, where we are at in, in San Rafael.
Is there, are any concerns with the, the second street elevation? Got a lot of glass. Any concerns about reflections onto the sidewalk and onto the street? I noticed on the eastern elevation, you have like a screening mesh or metal kind of to break up that.
So, the screen, I actually have to let Dan Genada, our architect, respond to that, but the screens are mainly not for reflection, because the glass is non-reflective, but the screens are added for protecting from heat gain and the sun, direct sun. So, it's mainly for sustainability reasons. But I'll let Dan answer the second half of the question.
Hi, I'm Dan Genada, I'm Johnson Fain architect on the project. Are you talking about reflectivity of the glass onto the road?
Yeah, on the southern, south Second Street, the southern exposure.
Yeah. When we try to pick glass, and we've got a sample here, but, you know, glass is reflective, and you have to be careful about coatings. And we tried to pick a glass that is as least reflective as possible. It's got more of a tint to it than reflectivity. On the south side of the elevation that you see here, we're more concerned about, you know, the energy gain that you're getting from the south and making sure that we have eyebrows. You can see in the rendering here, there's eyebrow at each level and it casts a shadow on the inside. There is articulation on it that, if you look at a detail of that elevation, there's glass and there is some metal panels too, so it's not entirely glass. And at the lower portion, there's definitely more articulation. At the ground level, there's actually cement fiber panels, so it's a little bit more solid. And then the trees themselves on that side, we're using mature trees on all the streets. They're going to help with any type of reflection that you would see, you know, coming from a car or walking.
Thanks. I think that's, that's all I have.
Mr. Lockren.
Can, I'm sorry, can we go back to the, the image of the creek? I want to understand where these, I think I know where the creek is, that the pathway that is being suggested that it be eliminated, but I'm not sure I understand what the alternative is for someone wanting to walk through there.
To whom are you addressing your question?
Rafi. I'm asking Rafi to, I guess, to put it up and to indicate where these two locations are.
So, the current, this is, this is the eastern, this is a public pathway off the property. Connects Anderson up to Francisco. There is a public path here on the property that goes along the outskirts on the, on the northwest side of the creek. And in the last entitlement in 2015, there was a request to add a path along the outside of this parking area connecting here to Second.
So, it would be, the proposed path that was required under the previous approval would be, in a sense, parallel to the city-owned path on the east side of the creek. It was a new path to be constructed when the garage expansion was done, as Sean showed, on the west side of the creek.
So, the path in question has not currently been built?
No.
So, this is where I'm confused then, because I thought the applicant was saying that on the existing path, there are safety issues.
So, I, applicant, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what was being intended to be said is that the city path that currently exists, right here, in consultation with our police department, there are, I guess that's one of the hotspots in the city for various criminal and other activities occurring along there. That's a city-owned path. It's used by teenagers, students going to Davidson, as well as other people to walk along there. They do have a lot of issues with homelessness, drug activity, littering, garbage of paraphernalia, and so they're constantly working out there to abate those issues. The police have said that in recent months, it's been a little better, but it is a hotspot that keeps popping up. And that's, again, the city current existing path that the city owns and maintains. When we asked them about this, this new path that was previously required under the previous approval, that's being requested to be removed as part of this development agreement, the police indicated that, you know, public access is good, they support public access. They don't think that creating the public access will increase crime in the area, but it'll be another location where crime, if it were to occur, could occur. And it's on private property in that particular case, so it'd be, you know, the maintenance and prevention would first fall upon the private property owner to continue to patrol that, and then the police would get involved if there, you know, unfortunately would be an incident or some crime that happens that needs a report or some sort of police action.
Okay.
But there's no other, I think I've, we've heard a little bit of, some questions pop up from the public about whether BioMarin is requesting that all public access be removed from their campus, and that is not the case. So, this area back here, this park, was required as part of the original development agreement to be maintained and open to public use, and there's special event functions that can occur out there. It can be closed during certain hours, dawn to dusk, but that is, has a public easement on it and it has to be maintained. So, that's not proposed to be changed. The only, yeah, nor is the public parking over on the Lindoro lot. The only thing that is being requested is to not continue to require an unbuilt path that was previously required for that on the backside of this garage. Does that clarify?
Yep, it does. That helps. Thank you. I do have a few more questions. I'm hoping the applicant can talk to their current TDM program and what enhancements you would intend to make to meet the requirements set forth in the mitigation measures.
So, currently, BioMarin, on our own internal websites, supports employees to sign up for programs. We have a pre-tax dollars that we help our employees for public transportation. For the future, when the first building goes live and we move into the building, we like to propose a more comprehensive TDM program, a more mindful carpool program that actually, you know, coordinates people finding, ride-sharing with one another, making sure parking spaces for carpool gets priority, and, you know, so put those things first, as well as other incentives. We haven't taken a deep dive into it, but when, within the next couple of years, as we get closer to the date of construction, we will be providing a plan at that time. And then we'll measure it to make sure it is successful.
Thank you. I'm wondering what percent of your current employees take advantage of the program?
Of, you know, we don't, we haven't done a survey as far as what percentage. We know that since the Smart started, the rate of employees using it have gone up quite a bit. We just recently started a shuttle in Novato from the Hamilton Station to that campus, because it's over two miles, based on the demand that we have had. So, we know that using public transportation is quite popular, and we get a lot of positive comments. And, you know, we will conduct surveys and get more assessments, but right now I don't have the specific numbers to share with you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Davidson? Can we see?
Yeah, so a quick question. This may be staff, but this may also be BioMarin. So, you mentioned the phased approach to building out the three buildings. And based on, based on the timelines that you mentioned, I'm wondering, back to the EIR, with regards to the traffic impacts, the specific impact that you, that you discovered here, is, how does that, how is it impacted by the phased approach to the construction?
I'll take a stab at that, and then David can correct me if I make a mistake. But basically, in our analysis, I'm pretty sure we're looking at sort of the worst-case scenario, because we're assuming everything is built out. So, if you're phasing it, you're not going to have that intensity of the impact all at one time. David, is that correct? No.
That's right. The traffic analysis assumes complete build-out of everything on the site, including BioMarin Buildings A and B, as well as Whistlestop, but it also assumed no TDM. So, all the analysis was based on that worst-case scenario before any mitigations were in place.
So, is that correct to say that the, the analysis essentially assumes, under, say, today's conditions, the full build-out and what that would look like?
Correct. It looked at, in a couple of years from now, when it's built out, it overlaid that on the predicted conditions throughout the city, and it also looked 20 years beyond, also upon, you know, the build-out of the site, plus what's expected in San Rafael.
Okay. So, would it be, would it be accurate to say then that if we were to, say, phases over 10 years, that we were realistically looking at something considerably less than the worst-case scenario?
Well, with mitigation, particularly the TDM program, which would be, require 15, at least 15% less trips.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's all for me. Thanks.
Did you want to?
Yeah, I want to confuse matters some more. I like doing that. So, a couple of things just to add on to that as well. So, again, we have to remember that currently, the city's current threshold that we are using to evaluate traffic impacts is something called Level of Service. So, it's intersection delays, seconds of delay at intersections graded A through F. With our new general plan, we may not have Level of Service as a threshold downtown. That's current, I guess, conceptual direction that we're going is downtown would only be regulated by VMT, and the rest of the city, everywhere else would be, still have a local general plan Level of Service standard, which we can't use for SEQA, but we would still have it in our general plan for other parts of town, and then we'd still have to do VMT for SEQA purposes elsewhere as well. So, that metric may change with... So that metric may change with the adoption of a new general plan. The, the second point is, regardless though, if we do maintain a level of service, once a project is approved and the entitlements are valid, the trips associated with that project would remain in the baseline traffic model scenario. So we don't just approve a project and then forget about it and keep adding more traffic from other projects. You have to consider it as it's going to be built for the term of the approval. So for the next 10 years, the traffic from BioMarin project, even though it's not even built, would be built into the base, into the baseline of the traffic model. And other projects would then have to consider that with, when we add their traffic to that. Does that make sense? Yeah.
See, so on that, slightly related to that note, for, for BioMarin, can you kind of walk me through the expected impact on a couple of things? One is expected impact on new employment. So what kind of numbers are you thinking in terms of what you'd be able to bring in?
So we assumed with this new development, we will have one laboratory building and then one office building, where the scientists that work in the lab actually sits in the office building. And we assumed, did we assume 550, 550 new employees to be added to BioMarin?
Okay. And in terms of, this may be, I don't know if you've done these projections yet, but do you have some sense of where you think they're, they may be living? So I'm just kind of trying to conceptualize, so I know that we have our EIR and sort of the projected models, but also just trying to conceptualize where they may be coming from within Marin or the Bay Area to their workplace.
You know, interesting that you asked, because I was just looking at that for a different reason. And interestingly enough, of our total number of employees, a quarter of them live in Marin County. And that, that has also significantly grown since the last time that I looked at these numbers, about two years ago. So, and then another eighth of our employees live further north in North Bay.
Okay.
Right? So majority, it seems like that population is picking up and, yeah.
Okay. And what would you say is the distribution of job roles? You mentioned that, you know, this is going to be sort of lab-focused, so a lot of scientists. But also things like support staff, cleaning staff, et cetera. Can you, can I give a sense of the breakdown there?
I wouldn't be able to, to break it down. But I know that, Josh, you had some numbers for every employment, do you want to talk about that? For every employment at BioMarin, there is eight jobs created in the community, I didn't recall that.
And, and you are?
I'm Josh Townsend, I work on behalf of BioMarin. And we, we did an economic analysis. And, and part of this was how many jobs are created per, per actual dollar that's brought in and per job that's created. And I, I think the facts are, and, and I can provide you with this later, but I believe per, per employee, per 1.1 employee, it, it spins off to another 6.2 employees within the community in a, in a different role consultant-wise and just kind of the ripple effect.
Okay.
So it is, but yeah, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all for me, thanks.
Commissioner Davidson? No? I, I have a couple of it, I'll get back to you, if that's okay. Okay. So I wanted to ask Samimpour about the public safety and the paths. So we've got the slide up there and we know you have some publicly accessible interior paths. No, the last one was good, that's good. That's where I can see the paths. And you made some comments earlier about, we know about problems with paths. I don't know if, if you were referring solely to the city-owned path on the other side of the creek or if you were also referring to experience that BioMarin has had in the paths on its own campus. Can you clarify that, please?
I was referring to actually both. BioMarin has experienced, you know, incidents on its own campus, specifically in the Lincoln parking garage, that we had to add some more fencing on the windows of, of the parking garage. And our security, you know, employees are continuously walking around and they're present at all times at the entry to the Lincoln garage, specifically just assuring safety.
Thank you. Commissioner Lockren?
My question was, this was a follow-up question, I'm sorry, it's probably for staff, but related to the mitigation measures and looking at Transportation Measure 1, it says this mitigation measure shall continue in perpetuity for the project site until 15% reduction is identified for three consecutive years. So the reason I'm coming back to that is just a concern over traffic. But I'm wondering what happens, so it says it's in perpetuity, but it's not if it goes away after three years. But the other thing is that why would it go after, away after three years? Why would they not continue to monitor a 15% reduction?
I have the same question.
Hold on one second, David. Do you remember this mitigation measure in terms of why we didn't have it going for perpetuity, in terms of monitoring it? I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how that was determined.
Okay.
Mr. Beloyan, do you have any response on that?
Let us look at, look, look some information up and we'll get back to you if we can find some information on that.
Right. Anything else? Commissioner Lockren?
Not at this time.
Ms. Samimpour, I have another question. You mentioned that you expect to have Department of Toxic Substances Control sign off on the site remediation during the year 2020. Is there, is that going to be December or, or March?
Well, what we know is that there is going to be a couple more tests done. And then while DTSC has the result of those tests, which I think it'll happen sometime in April or May, then if the results come satisfactory to them, then we move to the next step, which is getting their approvals and the certification.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. O'Hare about the same issue. And with respect to Whistlestop moving ahead, you can't move ahead until these DTSC signs off on, on this. Assuming that's a predicate to any kind of land transfer to, to Whistlestop, because there is, my understanding is that there is a, an existing recorded restriction on transfer of the property without mediation. So how, how does the remediation schedule affect Whistlestop's plans for moving forward? Because you said it was tied to entitlements, but I'm trying to find out if this has anything to do with it as well.
Yeah. Let me sort of give you our timeline and my answer to your, your question. Once we receive entitlements, even though we have the financing for the Healthy Aging Center, it, as I mentioned in my remarks, Eden Housing cannot pursue funding the $38 million that we need to fund the affordable housing until we have title, entitlements. So let's assume that's in February. It takes, it'll take up to six months to about, about the rest of 2020, estimated, to secure the, the affordable housing funding. So in, in looking at what, what Char just mentioned, towards the end of 2020, was, and beginning of 2021 is when we would expect to be, be able to begin construction. And so during the time that all the approvals are being made, our agreement with BioMarin is being made, would have to be done by the end of 2020. And then we would be, hopefully have secured the affordable housing funding. And then we would be ready to begin construction in the beginning of 2021. So from that estimated timeframe, everything would work.
So you're not concerned that the, about having the DTSC sign off before you could make application for the, or engage in the various beauty contests and seek funding?
I don't, I, I believe that, I'm going to, Susie, we don't, we're okay? Susie says we're okay, we're okay. She has to raise the 38 million, so.
So while I have you at the lectern, there's a reference in here, one of the, the public benefits that's supporting what we're being asked to do tonight is, there's a reference to a three-year leaseback. Can you put that in, in terms that we can understand what's involved in that leaseback? Why is that, why is that a good thing?
Well, I think that has, the leaseback has to do with the property swap we're doing with BioMarin. Part of our, our agreement with BioMarin is that we are going, we're trading property, if you will, which is our Lindaro corporate yard, 648 Lindaro. And so there, we're doing a sale-leaseback so that we have time to be able to relocate our transportation operations from the property that they will take title. So there, we're going to exchange title, we will, they will become our landlord for three years as we look for the relocation of our transportation, of which we're already looking for in anticipation of this happening.
And I assume that the, the numbers involved in the, in the valuation of that sale and leaseback were, were included in the calculation that led to the 1.2 million-dollar donation value for the property?
Yes. BioMarin conducted fair market appraisals. We reviewed them with our attorney and it was part of the agreement, the MOU that we have with BioMarin. Yes, we're, we're in agreement.
Thank you.
May I add something? And while we are in total agreement, I just wanted to clarify, the 1.2 million dollars is just the land difference of the value between two properties? The three-year leaseback for $1 a year each year is not calculated in that 1.2 million. That is in addition to that, but we haven't calculated that.
So you're saying that the, the monetary benefit to Whistlestop is greater than the 1.2 if you, if you add in the value of the, of the leaseback?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you while you're up there, what, what is your expected use of the Lindaro property at that point?
I don't know. I think I have three years, I don't know at this time.
Any more questions of the applicant by commissioners at this point?
We can try to answer that question, yeah. It's taken three of us to try to figure out why they're wording with such. And when you do these EIRs sometimes, you have wording that isn't as clear as it should be. So the idea is that you should have the 15% reduction forever for the project. Our intention was that the monitoring for that, once it showed that for three years in a row that you had the 15% reduction, it was kind of an assurance that it was working and that you would be able to stop the monitoring, not the 15% reduction. That would be for the perpetuity of the project. But it could be rewarded if we wanted to say that if, for, for three years in a row you had the 15% reduction, you could stop the monitoring and maybe then come back after a third year. You could do it like every three years or every four years, whatever. You could just do it less often, because you'd sort of know at that point that it was fairly successful. Does that, that make sense? I think we could have worded it a little bit more clearly. But it is in perpetuity for the project to have the 15% reduction.
Okay, I think that makes sense, although I, I do think we're going to need to reward it, so that it's clear.
Okay.
So it, it sounds to me as if it is similar, we face this situation with, you know, ongoing, how do we know that the applicant is going to do what we've asked her to do when we impose a condition to the grant of an entitlement? So this, this is in the nature of a, it's not quite a condition, is it? Because you just, is it a condition that the applicant operates its, its business in a, in a manner and provide a TDM program in a manner that provides a 15% reduction from baseline? Is that, is that the condition that we're, we're talking about?
Yeah, so the mitigation measures are required for ongoing compliance. This mitigation measure was included as a use permit condition requiring ongoing compliance. The question I think is, how often are you, do you need to check that and have it demonstrated to you that there is, or still achieving the 15% compliance reduction? So I think what, what we're hearing is we're going to come up with some language should the commission want to proceed with this project to clarify that and suggest a modification to the mitigation, mitigation measure, as well as where it appears in the conditions of approval to clarify that.
So that's going to be in Exhibit 2B?
2G. It will be in 2B and it'll be in 2G, correct.
Thank you for undertaking that. So at this point, I'd like to invite members of the public to come speak before you all jump up. Could I have a show of hands for the number of people who expect to come up to the lectern and address the commission tonight? Okay. So I'm going to take a chance and not have you run a clock on, on this. But I would ask that you limit your, your comments to three minutes. Are we okay with, with that? Okay, so, but I'm going to trust you to not, not run over the three-minute limit. And as you are, as I'll admonish you, once, once again, we'd love to have you identify yourself when you come to the mic. Make sure you speak into the mic, have it close to your, to your, your mouth. Sign in when you are done. And if you speak and somebody, and you follow someone who has already expressed your point of view, it is perfectly acceptable to let us know you support what they've said and you don't necessarily need to repeat what they said. So that'll invite the, open the public hearing and invite the first speaker to come to the lectern.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Terri Dowling. And I'm co-chair of the Aging Action Initiative here in Marin County. I'm also, I serve as a commissioner on the Marin Commission on Aging. Affordable housing for older adults is critically needed in this county. Today, the Board of Supervisors for the county approved the Age Friendly County of Marin's Plan. It was voted on unanimously and approved. And I wanted to take a second and read just a little bit about the focus area on housing, which is one of the number-one focus areas of this plan. Ensuring that older adults can age in their desired setting, within their means and with necessary accommodations should be a priority for any age-friendly community. Marin County suffers from a severe limited supply of affordable and accessible age-friendly housing. While the overall population in Marin County is projected to increase by about 4% between 2015 and 2040, the number of residents aged 60 years and older is projected to increase by 42% during the same time period. Whistlestop's Eden Housing, the Healthy Aging Campus, is a role model for the kind of housing for older adults that we need in Marin. On behalf of the Aging Action Initiative, I really urge you to support this progressive and innovative housing for older adults in San Rafael. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Linda Jackson and I am here from the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. And we support affordable housing that is in the right setting environmentally. And we support social justice. This project is, meets all those criteria. It's in the right location, it's serving people who need affordable housing. And we, I'll note that in the study that was done recently for the Commission on Aging, they said there's 7,000 older people who need affordable rental housing. If you take, San Rafael has about 25% of the population in Marin County. So that's about seven, 1,750 units needed, affordable rental housing in San Rafael. These 67 units are a start. The model for Whistlestop is something we need to replicate across the county, maybe not the height. But in downtown San Rafael, I want to say thank you for supporting our ask for that additional floor, for those additional units, because they are so desperately needing, needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nina Rizzo and I manage green trip certifications at Transform. We're a nonprofit and we promote walkable communities with excellent transportation choices so that everyone can get to where they need to go, help solve the affordability crisis and help solve climate change. Green trip certification recognizes multifamily developments that reduce traffic, parking and greenhouse gas emissions. And the Eden Housing component of this project meets our criteria. criteria. So when residents have access to affordable homes near transit and services, there are a lot of benefits that come with that, including increased household transportation savings, economic support for locally-serving businesses, less freeway traffic and fewer pedestrian collisions, improved public health through more walking and better air quality and a greater demand and support for the transit that you have available here. Reducing driving is one of the main ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And transit-oriented development like this one is especially helpful because it prevents sprawl on the urban boundary. This project in particular, households will emit 58% fewer greenhouse gases than the regional average. You probably already know this, but just in case you don't, the transit service near this project in downtown San Rafael is singularly exceptional in the North Bay. It is the only location that has 48 or more transit trips per hour. On average, in the rest of the county, it's less than six transit trips per hour. And specifically near this project, within approximately a five-minute walk, you have access to 734 buses and 34 smart trains. So Eden's housing as this component as part of the Whistlestop is a welcome addition to the Green Trip family of projects and I encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Will you please sign?
Oh, and I also just want to leave this material packet for your staff.
First, first I'd like to thank you for your help earlier this evening.
Of course. Hello, my name is Amy Likeover. I'm involved with neighborhoods in the city of San Rafael. First I have three questions and then two comments. What will the freezing of the impact fees cost the city? The next is, in the staff report, it was recommended that we open the public hearing and we close public hearing. And my question is when? So there are, in my mind, there are two controversial issues under the terms requested by the applicant. And I, I'm hopeful that there will be a long, I don't know how long the public hearing component will be, so that's my question. I was wondering if, other than tonight, people have an opportunity to comment on the terms that are being requested. And then something else from the report, the remediation process when completed will allow for residential development as proposed. I'm not quite sure what residential development we're talking about here. Because none of the, I mean, aside from Whistlestop, is that the only residential development they're referring to? Okay. And then I'd like to, I'd like to urge, urge the city to support the maintenance of the path. Public walkways are very, a very hard fought and won gesture. It's once gone, they're gone. And while there may be problems in public parks, not just in San Rafael and walkways, it provides for movement across a very busy area for pedestrians, for cyclists probably as well. And really, very importantly, this is a public amenity. The creek is something that we in San Rafael and neighbors in San Rafael are really very happy to have. And if that's closed, if that area is closed in spite of the fact that BioMarin may have to beef up their security in order to feel comfortable, once closed, that part of the creek simply isn't available to the public. And I'm also a teacher, as Mark knows, and students being able to come and go is something actually very exciting, being on the BioMarin property, you know, a world-class global corporate headquarters. And I, I think that that is something we want to keep in mind when we start talking about closing public walkways. The other is, so I'm the chair of the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods and part of the prior agreements, as you know, was to allow for public meeting space. Josh Townsend has been our liaison and I did not hear about this from BioMarin, that they're proposing the shifting where meeting space was from 750 Lindaro to their new building. That may seem like it's insignificant, but it would be a fair, the courtesy of contacting those public nonprofits that use their, their rooms now would be much appreciated. I shouldn't have to hear about this through the grapevine, that, that was one of the terms. And I'd like to know, while they talk about it being equivalent, square footage and all that, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, what that might look like. Because we had to work very, very hard to get what we were entitled to use over the past five years, say. You know, we were required to pay insurance and finally that was waived. It was very difficult. I, I worked through the mayor's office, et cetera, and now we're allowed to use the space as we, as per agreement. But then I just heard about this from someone else. So thank you very much. This goes to BioMarin for keeping those communication paths open and, and reaching out to us.
Thank you. Next.
Members of the planning commission, I'm Judy Binsaka and I'm here tonight representing the League of Women Voters of Marin County. The League has been a longtime supporter of the work Whistlestop performs to provide critically needed services and amenities for older adults. Those services are needed more than ever. The rapidly growing number of Marin seniors over 85 years requires improvements in housing, healthcare, nutrition and transportation, as well as newer vital services such as social interaction and resource referrals. The Whistlestop project is a major step towards providing those services. Its location is excellent for seniors. Its design concept and abundant landscaping fit well with the adjoining BioMarin property. A key factor is seniors' age is the opportunity to socialize with their peers. That opportunity will be provided by the open-air garden, common spaces and a library, preventing tenant isolation. There are various transportation options available, eliminating the need for tenants to own their own cars. In so many ways, this project has been thoughtfully planned with attention to satisfying the concerns of the city and the greater Marin County community as well as its tenants. We ask this commission to recommend project approval to the San Rafael City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Bill Carney, Chair of Sustainable San Rafael. I want to add our voice certainly in support of your approval of this overall development without delay, doesn't need to move forward. However, we do urge that you take a close look at and delete the item in the development agreement that eliminates the 2015 requirement for a path along the north side or along the Mahone Creek adjacent to the BioMarin garage on Lincoln Avenue. This item has no nexus to the Third Street development that's before you tonight or to the rationale for the development agreement. The path was required five years ago to humanize and naturalize the scale of a very large parking structure. By reducing pedestrian options and access to the transit center, the elimination of the path would in fact worsen the transportation impacts for which the Third Street projects need a finding of overriding consideration. So Mahone Creek is a very important natural resource for downtown San Rafael. The required parkway, I'm sorry, walkway continues the path along the creek that already exists, as you've seen, through the BioMarin campus between Lindaro and Lincoln, continues at another block and would link the whole campus seamlessly to the transit center. Most importantly, the path allows people a park-like connection to nature of the sort that becomes more difficult to find as our city grows. That connection to nature remains an essential part of the character of Marin. So for these various reasons, the, the path and the adjacent restoration, a proposed adjacent restoration of Mahone Creek are prominently featured in the downtown precise plan that is now nearing completion. So all of us realize that there are real issues in any and every urban environment. But we also believe that these, there are ways of dealing with these issues without depriving the rest of us of an optimal urban environment, including rules and hours of operations and other means. So what we're asking of the planning commission is that you take out that one-sentence item from your resolution recommending the development agreement to the city council. They're the ones making the final decision, of course. And we ask that BioMarin consider entering this new agreement, this new development agreement, with the previous commitment to build the path still in place. Perhaps with an added city clarification, that access could be restricted with reasonable rules and perhaps to daylight hours to address some of the concerns that have been, have been raised. Thanks very much for your consideration and thanks very much to the Whistlestop and BioMarin team for putting together a really stellar project.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Next speaker.
My name's Samantha Sargent. I'm actually a neighbor of BioMarin's. I live on B Street. I'm here tonight to speak about the path, the continuation of the path, now that Raffi's explained it, that we're not actually losing a path, but losing a potentially new path and that we have a path. I would like to invite everybody to think about maybe beefing up the other side and making that more park-like. I don't know if it's just the renderings, but the city's own side doesn't look as nice as BioMarin's. So maybe something that we could do in the future, since I also understand that developing stuff on the creek and construction near creek side isn't very healthy for it, maybe a better solution would be to invite BioMarin to participate in the creek side restoration and in a newly formed group, the Mahone, Friends of Mahone Creek, through the Los Galinas Watershed, and that we all put our minds together and do something that would be both beneficial for the creek and would continue the pedestrian safety. Maybe give this a little bit more think and do it together. So maybe we can leave that in there with the future of, you know, using the rest of the path and having them participate and beefing that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patrick Seidler. I'm from WTB TAM. We're a nonprofit that promotes sustainable mobility. We've been working in the county for 27 years. We started working on the Greenway, got that initiated quite a while ago, and been working not only in the county, but also in the state nationally and internationally on sustainable mobility. And I tell you, it's a real honor to be here tonight. You've got a terrific project. This is really exciting to be here. And I just want to thank you all for all the hard work that you've done and most particularly for the attention that you're giving to the sustainable mobility of walking and biking and accessing your property. But what I urge you to pay attention to, what I came here originally to talk about, it's a piece of paper I got put in front of you, where it has some attachments to it, including some of the San Rafael pedestrian bike plan. And what it does is it talks about that what's called the Mahone Creek Path, which is that city pathway that comes down along the south side of the project area. And that's actually a really, a real fly in the ointment in that area, because what it does is it drops the pedestrians and the cyclists off mid-block. So what you really have is a cul-de-sac. And the reason that you're having gatherings of people that are there that, let's say, aren't necessarily the folks you want on the bike path, is because it is a cul-de-sac. And what you'll find is when you look at the studies, particularly I urge you to look at the studies from the Rails to Trails Conservancy, what they'll tell you is that a bike path and a walkway is the safest place in America. And so what you want is you want continuous places with good Samaritans constantly walking or riding along, but what you have here is you got a dead-end street. And it ends right down at the block in the middle of Anderson. And we've been trying to work for 15 years to connect that, actually raised 1.2 million dollars to do it, but it was knocked out of the budget. But what we'd like to see done as part of the mitigations in this project, if you look at that picture that I've given you, is to build a bridge across Mahone Creek to get up to that intersection. And then for the proponents of the project, I think you all need to look at that part of the project very closely, because what that does is, is you're actually secluded, that's not connected to transit. Then that, that pathway that you're talking about on the west side or the upper north side of the creek and getting across that creek up to Second Street, those are the things that make the project porous. You want porosity. You want people to be able to walk and bike and get on and off and out of the project. If you eliminate, if you don't build that bridge, you're not going to get people to walk to the site. You're not going to get people to ride their bikes to the site. Second and Third Street are the most dangerous places in the world to be. So what you need is some alternatives to get to the project site. What we're interested in is building the safe route to school. So if you look at this project, it actually heads south on a multi-use path. And what we'd like you to consider, as you're looking at that 748 Lindaro, is to put, let us put a multi-use path across that to get safely to Davidson. Because we worked for years, and if you look on this map here, we were the ones that worked with the city to make SMART put that pathway in between Anderson and Rice, and we're working with the city to connect it from Rice to Second Street. We also urge the planning commission to look very closely, and everybody who's here, to look really closely at what happens with the north-south Greenway when it heads through the town from Second Street to Mission. And West Hamel Pius is really something you have to keep an eye on, because if you build West Hamel Pius properly and you connect the Mahone Creek path across properly to the other side of Lindaro, then you have porosity, then you have movement, then you can get people off of the project by walking and biking to the transit center. The problem with both of those pathways is they're cul-de-sacs. And what you need to do is you need to complete both of them. And it is, as one of the speakers said, it's an inordinate opportunity to connect the pathway in a community like this. And I got to tell you, I think you guys are smart enough to know that. You've got a great project, a great piece of property, and I urge you to change the conditions of the proposal to keep the pathway in there because that's the right decision. So anyway, we urge you to, to, to take a real hard look at keeping that pathway in there. And then the last part is that intersection at Anderson and Lindaro, that's an extremely dangerous intersection. It cannot be used by people, by school students, by elderly people, by anybody. And so what we urge you to do is to put what's called a protected intersection in there. And there's a whole packet that's on, that's in the back there about protected intersections. Mr. Parisi could tell you all about it. He's designed them, built them, and they're being built all around the United States, including in East Bay. And so we urge you to look at that packet and see, and see if we can get as part of the mitigations, the Class 4 bike lanes on Lindaro, the protected intersection at the, Anderson to Lindaro, and then get both sides of that creek, get that pathway on both sides of the creek. The applicants are going to love it when it's done and the city will be the ones that appreciate it and use it the most. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You sign in, sir? Sir, could you say anything?
I'm Diane Henderson. I'm a land use planner. I'm also chair of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And I wasn't going to speak. I came in support of the project. I wasn't going to speak because I feel like if I don't speak, you'll take action quicker and we can get this thing built. And we need the housing, we need the BioMarin project, and I really want to see that happen. I do want to make one comment, though, regarding the path. About five years ago, I was working for BioMarin when they came to you for entitlements for the parking garage. And at that time, we invited members of the planning commission and the city council to come out and actually walk the site and walk where the path would be. I believe Mr. Jennings was a part of that. It was frightening out there, and I'm a walker. I, I walk from my home, which is about five blocks west of here, to the gym at Dominican because I love to walk. And if I had school-aged children, I would not allow them to use the path. It was very frightening and I think the planning commissioners and council members that were out there were amazed by the scary people that were there and we were out there during broad daylight. I have total respect for Sustainable San Rafael and Bill Carney. I have total respect for Sustainable San Rafael and Bill Carney, but I think, I like what Samantha Shepherd raised. I think the money would be better spent because there are other paths out there, putting the money into that. You can sit in meetings in BioMarin and see people publicly urinate on the Mahones Creek walkways in their offices, and, and they will tell you that. I've done work for them for many years, or did work for them many years ago, and it really, I'm a firm believer that we need walkways and pedestrian and bicycle access, but I think, let's think this out, and I think the proposal that's in the report to not put the walkway where it's not safe is a very smart one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kate Powers. I'm a resident of San Rafael and also a member of San Rafael's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And I have comments on two, two aspects of the project. One is traffic and one is the creek. I am really concerned about traffic and congestion downtown, adding 450 more people working downtown without considering how their 15% just doesn't seem like enough. Second and third are a nightmare right now, and whether or not we use level of service as a SEQA measurement or not, you can't go below F, but I would say to Mr. Parisi, I think it's below F now. I don't know, you know, we haven't done any measurable observations. I went out there today and at 4:00 between Brooks Street on the west side of the project and Lindaro Street on the east side of the project, that block on Second Street, there were about 60 cars waiting for the light. On the far-left-hand lane, there were 18 cars in that row. It took one whole light, eight cars went, and there was traffic congestion, so only eight cars could go, and those other 10 cars plus more cars came and sapped through the next light. There was also traffic all the way back between Brooks and A and A and B. So I think that, you know, measurements have to be done. We can't just make generalized observations. The traffic study was done in early January of 20, in January of 2019, I believe. It's a, it's a different situation out there right now, and I have a friend who lives on Laurel Avenue and said, "I feel like a prisoner in my own house because there's certain times of the day that I just can't go anywhere." I think San Rafael, when it's approving development projects, has to, has to get the traffic as part of the mitigated, you can't keep approving development projects downtown without having solutions for the traffic and the congestion and, and the air pollution, that's a part of that. And I would just ask whether or not the 755 Lindaro project was considered during the traffic calculations for this project and whether the recently-approved hotel is considered a part of this traffic, that was part of the traffic calculations also, because I think some new calculations need to be done and some mitigations need to be specific. The last thing I just wanted to say is I agree with the Mahone Creek path request to put it back in. I think it's unfortunate that a development agreement was made without considering the opportunities to really restore and upgrade the creek environment. We're never going to restore it to a natural setting, but during my walk today, there were, I walked, the part where the path is right now, south of the 750 building and the 781 building, there were quail, there were western bluebirds, there was an egret, there were ducks in the creek. The creek, the creek has, there's bat rays seen in the creek sometimes. It's tidally influenced. It's, I believe it's part of the public trust, and so to the extent that sea level rise is going to continue to raise the level of the creek, the area next to the pathway, the general plan currently requires that there be a 25-foot setback. And I just think that instead of leaving that asphalt space for, what we fought for last time was that there wouldn't be parking facing the garage, surface parking, and then facing the creek as well, that the, for a four-foot pathway would be along the east side of that asphalt.
I think you're well over your three minutes.
All right. So I would just also ask you to reconsider the value of the creek. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Carney. If you, could you come on up? So I always appreciate input from Sustainable San Rafael. You, you think about things thoughtfully and, and address issues articulately. My, my question with respect to the comments that you raised about the, about the creek was talking about access to the transit center. And my, my question is, have you or Sustainable San Rafael thought about what your comments might be when and if that transit center is someplace else?
I believe all three of the alternative locations that are being considered are in the same direction, so I think this would continue to be an option and hopefully a pleasant option for getting up there. Right now, it's right across the street, I believe. Help me out, yes. The path daylights onto Second right across the street from the existing transit center that we're all fairly confident is not going to be there. However, the block immediately to the north of that, where the current Whistlestop building is, is one of the prime candidates. A second one straddles Fourth Street, combined with the Whistlestop Block and the, the, the block up to Fifth. And the third option is under the freeway north of Fourth Street, between Fourth and Fifth. So all of them are on that basic desire path, if you will, desire line. And I think the point made about Tamlet Pius as a, West Hamlet Pius as a potential continuation of pedestrian, bike, hopefully retail and shopping and person-activity corridor was also very well taken, and that would get you much closer to, or to get you to, to those positions and, and much closer to the third one.
Thank you. Any of the commissioners have any questions of any of the speakers who, who presented before we close the public hearing? Hearing. Siri, will you please address, come to the microphone, speak up and sign in? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Okay, so we're now at the point where we are going to deliberate and potentially make some decisions. So I would like to do this in a, as orderly a manner as, of which we might be, be capable. And so I'd like to get us to talk about the merits at the point it's appropriate to talk about the resolutions to which those particular merits relate. So if I am correct in having reviewed the papers, the staff report and materials and listened to the speakers this evening, it seems like the, the least complex of the resolutions to address this evening is resolution that is attached as Exhibit 2A to the staff report, and that is the resolution recommending, although I did notice that the title of the resolution that is in the, in, in the staff packet does not refer to recommendation. It says that we are, says that the planning commission is going to certify the, the final EIR, and I think in fact it should reflect that we are recommending certification of the ERF, so should we do so? Is that, am I correct in that?
You are correct. Sorry about that.
Okay, no, that's okay. But the, but the text of the resolution includes the words recommendation, or does it say we're certifying? Do we need to change that also?
It looks like on the, therefore be it resolved, on Exhibit 2A dash two, it also does say certify, so that would also need to be changed.
Okay.
And I think that's the only place where that, what I would suggest is to have all language, if you were to adopt this, to include a motion to change all language to recommend certification, and we can double-check, we catch everything.
Wherever, wherever it appears, okay. So bringing it back to the commission now for deliberations. The first issue is whether or not the environmental review has been conducted in a proper manner and whether the final environmental review reflects the, the, the address, the addressing of all the issues raised therein, not whether or not we, we, we're not making a decision on whether or not this is the, if this thing is, is, we approve of the environmental impact of it, but simply that it's been studied and, and we have been provided with a final environmental impact report that, that reflects all of the potential environmental consequences of, of the project. So with, with that, I would ask, do commissioners have anything they want to say before we might entertain a motion to adopt that exhibit? Or the resolution that appears as, as Exhibit 2B to the staff report?
The only thing I would ask is that this information under Trans 1 that we discussed prior, does that need to be an amendment to the motion to indicate that that will be changed to approve or certify the final EIR? That's a question I don't know.
Yes. So, do you want to say something first?
Please.
So we discussed how we might add some specifying language in the end of Trans 1 mitigation measure, which is part formally of the EIR as well as part of the mitigation monitoring program. Can I read you what our suggested language is? But if you have the text in front of you of Trans 1, then you'll know exactly where this goes, which is just before the last sentence. The last sentence reading, "This mitigation measure would reduce the impact to less than significant." So just before that, it would read, "After three consecutive years demonstrating 15% reduction each year, the monitoring shall be done every three years to ensure maintenance of the 15% reduction unless a violation occurs or a new owner slash lesser of the site applies. At that time, the monitoring shall start anew to ensure successful 15% reduction for three consecutive years."
My only question, that sounded great to me. The only part, and I don't know if this is necessary, is that removes this mitigation measure, so continue in perpetuity. Or maybe it, it does say that, but it, we, you've...
So in a way, the mitigation measure is continued in perpetuity, it's just that the phasing of the actual monitoring reports is changed, so that the monitoring report doesn't have to come in every year.
Right. But is it important to leave in the language that this mitigation measure shall continue in perpetuity?
We could take out the words in perpetuity if we want.
No, keep them.
Yeah, keep it.
In perpetuity, period, and then insert what you just said.
That's what you wanted to do. That's what we're doing. You're just adding this language after that perpetuity.
Are you sure that's covering the first for three consecutive years? Because we said, we said after three consecutive years. Oh, okay, you're right. You're right. So we could have put a period right after the word in perpetuity.
Right. And then where it says you would delete for the project site until the 15% reduction is identified for three consecutive years, that would be deleted.
Right.
And inserted what you read.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification.
All right.
Yeah.
Then if...
So would that language be inserted on attachment A8 to Exhibit 2B?
So that, that language will actually, is going to be recommended to be inserted in multiple locations. In the first Resolution 2A, our suggestion would be to add a whereas that that mitigation, Trans 1 to be modified, and then repeat the new language, the new amended language in a strike-through, underlined format to reflect the revised mitigation measure in this resolution. And then it'll appear in other locations as well, which we'll make suggestions to you if and when you get there.
Could I ask staff to recite that one more time and do it by reference to the first resolution with which we will be dealing, so that we can then incorporate that, that change by reference into what other, whichever other resolutions might be adopted? And so am I, did I have the right citation to the right place in, in the resolution attached as Exhibit 2B, or did I misspeak?
So currently, the commission is discussing 2A, which is the resolution to certify the EIR, and the suggestion is to add a finding or a, sorry, whereas that states that to clarify a mitigation measure, a recommendation is made to change Tran 1 to read and provide what Ms. Kuescocks here will read back to you in strike-through and underlined format, so it's clear what we're changing.
Okay, so, so we're going to put in, in 2A, an additional numbered item, or is it going to go in? Where do you propose to put it, in Exhibit 2A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'll be after the last whereas and before the now, therefore be it resolved.
Okay.
And the proposed language would read as follows, if you can read it, Ms. Kuescocks.
Yes. The words, the sentence stating, "This mitigation measure shall continue in perpetuity," shall have a period at that point with a cross-out of the words for the project site until the 15% reduction is identified for three consecutive years. And then the new language will include the following. "After three consecutive years demonstrating 15% reduction each year, the monitoring shall be done every three years to ensure maintenance of the 15% reduction unless a violation occurs or a new owner slash lesser of the site applies. At that time, the monitoring shall start anew to ensure successful 15% reduction for three consecutive years."
Any of the, so, let me address this in order. So do any of the commissioners want to address that specific language that's just been read to us that will be, and it is a modification to, I think the first time it's, first time, am I still correct, the first time it appears is in Exhibit A8 in, in Resolution 2B, and then there's going to be a separate recital clause in Resolution 2A that, that refers to that, right? And so what, so first I'd like to go to the, to the substance of what's been proposed, and we'll go back to, to what we need to do to wordsmith Resolution Exhibit 2A.
Can I make a motion? Do we accept the...
No, 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 I just, no, no, not, not yet. Not yet, Mark. Thank you. I just, all I wanted was, so we've heard, I think staff did a good job, in my opinion, staff did a good job of reflecting the sentiments up, up here that we ought to have language dealing with the condition into the future, not have it end after two, three, three consecutive years of, of demonstrated compliance. And I think that this language is good. So my, my question is, do you think that the proposed language needs to be modified in any way to address that concern? Or are people comfortable with that?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Then the next question is, turning now to Exhibit 2A and what will now be the final recital in that resolution that will appear on page Exhibit, Exhibit 2A dash two, what, what's your proposed language for the recital? Because that's the substance of what we're going to get to, but we need something to say whereas what? Whereas, whereas we will do this, whereas...
It would be whereas the following amendment is made to Trans 1.
Whereas the following clarification is made to Trans 1. is made to Trans-1.
Very good. Now, Ms. Commissioner Lubomirzky.
Yeah, how about I recommend that we recommend the city council certify the final EIR. We recommend they approve it. We recommend to them they approve the EIR. As amended.
As proposed, with the amended language proposed in the recitals and the reference to the Trans-1 condition, is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I vote aye. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Moving on. So, the next resolution is attached to the staff report as Exhibit 2B. And in this one, there is a recommendation to the city council that it adopt a statement of overriding considerations. The environmental impact report has identified certain environmental effects that cannot be reduced to a level below significance with mitigations, but that the benefits of the project are sufficient to override those environmental concerns. And also in that resolution are all of the conditions for the mitigations that will be put in place and the monitoring program for those mitigations. We would recommend to the city council that it adopt a statement of overriding considerations and adopt the mitigation monitoring program. Do I have that right, staff? More or less?
Correct.
Now... That resolution by itself, were it to be adopted, including the changes to the Trans-1 mitigation, does it do anything until, in fact, you don't really have the benefits that override the environmental concerns unless the last four items, or the last five items appearing in yellow are also adopted? And those go to the merits of the project in which the applicant is requesting a general plan amendment, a zoning text amendment, wants to create a new PD, new planned development zoning for the site, which blends together the existing PD with the new site for the BioMarine campus, approves the, essentially, not the development agreement itself, but the proposed terms for the development agreement, and the rest of the items required to move forward with this project, including the environmental design review permit, the master use permit, the small subdivision, the signed amendment, all the things that we ordinarily deal with with smaller, or may from time to time deal with the smaller projects. So, at this point, I think it may be appropriate to address the merits of the project, the items that have been raised by the speakers, anything that's been raised in the staff report, because if, and staff will please correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but I think that this is, this ends up being a package deal, even though we have to act on each of the resolutions individually.
Correct, and that's why it's a crossover, because you kind of have to, you only would adopt this resolution if you're going to be approving the project.
And we wouldn't, and we, and in my mind, there's a reason to do the last five merits resolutions first, and then go back to the statement of overriding concerns, but I don't want to, but you put the resolution program together, and tell me if I'm wrong about that, especially since, isn't it, it's the Exhibit 2C, 2D, 2E, and 2F, all of them in the yellow section, which require four commissioner votes in order to move forward on this project? So, if any of those were to fail, we're not really going to be able to take action on the resolution that's contained as 2B. Is that correct?
And I think it's fair for the commission to deliberate and discuss, in a sense, items that are included in 2C through 2G now, and have a discussion and see where that goes, because then that could inform you in how you may take action and what sort of motions could be made. So, I think having an overall discussion about the project merits without focusing on the specific resolutions right now could be a good approach to see if there's any concern with any of them, you know, what the inclination of the commissioners are.
So, we can start with the resolution attached to the staff report as Exhibit 2C, which is the Planning Commission's, which is a resolution adopted by the Planning Commission recommending to the city council that it approve an amendment to the general plan, amend the land use exhibit, the FAR maps, the land use element, height bonuses to allow the development of two 72-foot-tall four-story research and development buildings and at the San Rafael Corporate Center. That's just, that's the height bonus just at the Corporate Center, is that correct? In this resolution?
That height bonus is for the 999 Third property related to the two BioMarine buildings only.
For the BioMarine buildings only, okay. So, let's start with that one. And comments? Who end these?
You want a motion? I'm ready. I'm ready.
You're ready.
Yeah, I'm good with all of it.
Through the chair, just again, I want to clarify, though, I think the discussion is fine, but we would suggest that the actions be in this order when you get there. But if you want to possibly, like, may I suggest that maybe you, rather than focus on resolutions, facilitate a discussion on the general plan amendment, see if there's any concerns, any issues, see if there's consensus, then move on to the zone text amendment and so forth, and then you can formulate, going back for motions or discussions and so forth.
Thank you, that's helpful. I think Commissioner Lubomirzky, I share your urgency.
Well, let me, I'm good with maybe everything. The only concern I have with everything is the path. That's all I really have of this, of all discussing. And I shouldn't say also, I'm taking on good faith that the applicant will move the public meeting space. It'll be on the ground floor, similar size, similar everything else. That wasn't called out in the plans. It doesn't show where it'll be, but I'll take it on good faith. You guys are good people, it's a great project, that you will have a similar project.
Just to help out here, if I may, the path, I believe, is only addressed in the resolution attached as Exhibit 2F, the development agreement.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's it. And I would propose, I mean, there are a lot of homeless everywhere, it sucks. I mean, I understand that, but who knows in five years what the situation will be? Maybe we'll have a wonderful relocation center in Novato where all these people will move to. It'll be a beautiful place to hang out and watch the birds and, so, I mean, to make the argument that it's a draw for the homeless and drug use and stuff like that, I mean, a lot of that can be set for a lot of places, unfortunately, in San Rafael. But I don't think it's a reason not to have it be accessible. So, I would request that that be part of the agreement, that the path is maintained in the process.
And do I take your comments to mean that you would delete from the development agreement the benefit occurring, nearing to the, that nears to the applicant, to allowing it to remove the condition of constructing a path as required in the 2015 agreement?
Correct.
Action. Any other comments, Commissioner Lubomirzky?
No, I don't know. I hope the Transit Center doesn't move. I hope they spend all that money elevating the SmartTrax. In my world, that's what they should have done in the first place, because I drive from San Rafael every day, and it is crazy how long it takes for me to get from San Rafael High School to Bret Hart. It is obscene how long it takes. So, I mean, that's just my little gripe. They should have been elevated, just like the freeway, but that's okay.
Okay, any other commissioner, which I guess this is, in a way, a free-for-all on the merits at this point, but I think we're going to go with that. Who would like to go next? Commissioner Davidson, please.
I echo Commissioners Lubomirzky. My only comment on the path to not remove the condition to keep it, and I agree with one of the speakers, I don't have an opinion as to how it should be handled when it comes the time to build it, but I think it should be in collaboration with the city and to how best address the safety situation that exists now.
Any other comments on the merits, Commissioner Davidson? Commissioner Shumutzy?
So, are we speaking just on the path or just overall?
If you're prepared to speak on anything and everything, you have the floor.
Okay, I mean, I'm ready to just kind of get the enchilada done. So, I would say that, you know, with regards to the path, I don't have a strong opinion either way. I, you know, I have walked with my son in his stroller on the east side path. You know, even from an ADA or mobility perspective, I don't quite get the argument that the east side path is not accessible or drops you off. I mean, I had no issue crossing the street, getting to the transit, et cetera, et cetera. At the same time, though, I think there's merit in the comments that there's not necessarily an obligation to build something specific right now. And I think if the issue is just to maintain what is basically reserved for later, I think there's no reason to remove that at this point. I think for the general plan amendments, I think that the, just across the board, the general merits of the project, the economic benefits of the project are such that I think that the amendments would be acceptable to me. The, I guess the big other concern would be the traffic, but again, because we're looking at a 10-plus-year phased approach to development, I would strongly hope that over 10 years we will have, as a city, looked at the traffic situation and identified solutions. So, I don't think that it's reasonable to say that in 10 years, nothing will have changed, and therefore, we should not, you know, given the worst-case scenario, environmental impact on traffic, we should, you know, halt development due to that. I think also, given the fact that the community benefit that they're looking at, in addition to putting money towards signal change, I think that's a pretty strong gesture of good faith. It is expensive to read time the signals. It is expensive to do the analysis, to make the changes to the traffic lighting situation. But the fact of the matter is, regardless of whether or not this project goes forward, there needs to be a change made. And since it does cost money, and since talk is cheap, it is really easy to say, "Traffic sucks, therefore, build nothing." We still have to solve the problem. They're putting money up towards to do that. So, I think that, you know, given that consideration, I personally think that the merits of the project are such that I'd be comfortable with approving the resolution, given the amendments that we've made to the wording, to the first 2A resolution.
Commissioner Lockren?
So, first of all, we have seen this project, I think, four times, which is why we're not talking about everything there is to talk about up here. I think in the past, we've all expressed a lot of approval of the project in general, and absolutely thrilled to get some senior housing, affordable housing downtown. So, I just, I wanted to make sure that you knew that that was all on our minds. It's just at this point, we need to work through some of the details. Could you put, Rafi, could you put up there the items that were in the development plan? Okay. So, I am, at this point, given everything we have on the plate, I'm really fine with everything the way it is, except the path. I just don't think the path fits with this project. It's way on the other side of the development. It's not related to 999 Third Street, and so, I would not want to see that as part of the requested terms in the development agreement. Other than that, I think it's fabulous project and would be thrilled to see it all built and people living there and working there.
Yeah, we're getting to the, getting very near the end, and we're down to the short strokes. And I'm really happy to see this project is finally coming to an end, and I think it's going to be a terrific addition to downtown, both on the BioMarine campus as it's built out over time, and especially to allow Whistler Stop to realize a dream that's been a long time in the making and very well thought out and a significant contribution to the health of our community and the betterment of our community. It seems that we're down to the path. And I just don't, I don't have a strong feeling about the path. I'm not persuaded that it's needed. It seems that it parallels the existing path on the other side of the creek, and I do think there may be opportunities to improve that. And I'm not inclined to hold up approvals because of the path. On the other hand, I'm not inclined to have this thing fail, because my fellow commissioners think that the path condition ought to be deleted, or the path what you get ought to be deleted from the development agreement, which is ultimately a decision of the city council. It's not something that we ordinarily get into planning. There's been negotiation that's gone on in that. So, there were some great points that were raised here tonight about the need for the path or the need for some kind of path improvement in some ways. And I just don't, I don't feel like holding up the approvals tonight, having the Planning Commission send this on to the city council for that. So, I guess I would like to, I'd like to get a sense, if there are four commissioners here who are going to, are ready to support a approval of these resolutions, with the exception of a modification of the Trans-1 and the modification of 2F with the deletion of the requested term from the DA on the removal of the path condition, I'd be willing to move forward on that basis, if that's the sense of the commission, and I would entertain a motion to that effect. And the motion I'm looking for is, we'll go, if that's where we're going to be, you're going to have to spell out that the development agreement does not include the benefit to the applicant of the removal of the path construction condition.
I move to, I move to, I move to accept the current resolutions as worded, with the exception of the initial amendment that we discussed previously. So, that includes the DA as it is.
Is there a second?
I have a question.
Nope, nope, you get, is it a question about the form of the motion?
About what he said.
Okay, just, you could ask him about what he's proposing, but you can't ask him about the merits of it. Go ahead.
I don't understand if what he said includes the removal of the condition to not have the path.
So, this is DA as is right now?
All of the proposed resolutions as they currently exist, subject to the amendment with respect to mitigation condition contained in Trans-1?
Correct.
Is there a second? No, there is no second? Okay, is there a...
Rafi, can you help us?
Yeah, can I jump in here really quick?
Would it be possible for us to just, I mean, I'm not going to hold this up. I'm not going to vote no because of path. Is it possible we can, I mean, we can take a straw vote, if you would, of the commission on who would recommend, you know, I know it goes the way it is. It would go with the path being removed, but we could then have a vote that would at least represent the fact that some of the commissioners But we could then have a vote that would at least represent the fact that some of the commissioners thought the path should be maintained or should be... So would that be, make sense for Rafi?
Yeah, so that was actually my suggestion. So what I'm hearing as consensus from the commission is that there is support for all the various requests and entitlements and all the resolutions. The only issue question is that of the path. From what I gathered, I heard somewhat of a split three-one?
Three-two.
Three-two or four-one to keep the path. So first off, my suggestion would be that we take these one by one because there are gonna be some changes that we recommend to different resolutions to reflect the prior comments about the Tran One. So I think we should go through these one by one. I think in terms of the development agreement, two F, it is fair for the commission to adopt the resolution recommending approval of the DA with a comment that there is, you know, there is a four-one split that the path should remain and that the council will include that in their deliberation, that the commission was not sold on removal of the path for X, Y, and Z for these reasons.
That goes in a resolution? How does, I'm just not sure. It seems to me we either voted up or down.
Again, the scope, the scope for the development agreement for the planning commission is really is the development agreement in general consistent with the general plan in totality. The terms of the, this is where it gets a little tricky. The terms of the specific contract are, they are part of it, they're in the document, yes. But your purview is really consistency with the general plan. So the idea would be that you could pass the resolution, if that's what your inclination is, and have a statement that there is, that there might be concern with the path or do a separate motion to inform the council that although passed, the path is still an issue and, you know, maybe provide us a couple more reasons why keeping the path. I heard a few, but to help us understand, to articulate to the council what those reasons are so that they can include that in their deliberation.
So I think what's being suggested is we'll take this as is with the transportation condition revised. And what we're saying is that we find that all of these, including adoption of a development agreement, is consistent with the, with the general plan. And then if an individual commissioner wants to, after we take that action, if that falls on, make another motion to, that it's a sense of the commission that the development agreement ought not to include a benefit to the applicant of removing the path construction condition. Is that what you're suggesting?
Correct.
And I would support that. Would one of the commissioners who wants, who feels strongly about the retaining the path construction condition wanna make a motion to that effect?
I would move that we request the applicant, or me, continue with the approved plan of 2015, that a path along the east side of the parking lot be maintained. Does that make sense? Got that, Rafi?
Is there, if I may ask a question of staff as to the timing, is there a reason that this motion could not be acted upon before the other action on the other resolutions? Because I think Rafi was contemplating that that would be a follow-on resolution to the adoption of the resolutions attached to the staff report.
I withdraw my motion.
I'm very confused. I thought we needed six different motions to do this. So why don't we just start working through them one by one? And when we get to the planned, the development agreement, we'll deal with, we'll decide how we're gonna deal with that.
Yes. It should be taken one by one.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to approve adoption of the resolution attached to the staff report as exhibit two B with the amendments related to the transportation and TDM monitoring condition as approved in the adoption of the resolution recommending certification of the EIR, final EIR. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the resolution in the form attached to the staff report as exhibit two B with the additional language related to the transportation demand monitoring mitigation program be approved. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, we'd just like to say, in terms of, in essence, we're determining if the project benefits outweigh the costs. And there are costs associated with this with respect to the unmitigated elements in the SEQA analysis. And I, however, and I am very concerned ultimately about traffic, but I think the benefits of the project, the senior housing it brings and the jobs it brings and the ability that it helps develop a brown, what was a brown site, are all benefits that outweigh the costs associated with the project.
Any other comments from any other commissioners? So I just, I would point to the slide that was put up earlier describing the development agreement and the benefits described therein as being the benefits that would support the adoption of a statement of overriding considerations that we'd recommend to the city council in adopting the resolution before us tonight, that it consider those benefits to be sufficient. Any other, no further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Commissioner Lachran. We'll move on now to the motion that is attached as exhibit two C to the staff report. This is approving the amendment of the general plan, approving the amendment of land use element height bonuses for the Biomarine portion of the project. Is that correct? Did I have that articulated correctly? Do I have a motion to approve that resolution? In the form submitted with, I don't know, does this contain the?
There are no changes to the transportation.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the resolution attached to the staff report as exhibit two D. And in this resolution, we are recommending to the city council the approval of an amendment to the portions of the zoning ordinance related to height bonuses to create a new 20-foot height bonus for the Biomarine project. And I'm assuming this does not have the, this does not, we don't have to deal with the trans, with mitigation here. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as submitted?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on, motion carries. Moving on now to the resolution attached to the staff report as exhibit two E. This is a resolution that deals with the changing the planned development rezoning to combine the existing PD with the new property to be developed and to allow the development of two 72-foot tall four-story buildings. Again, my question, does this have the transportation monitoring condition in it?
No, there is no Tran One mitigation measure and no changes that are necessary to this one.
Right, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution attached to, in the form attached to the staff report as exhibit two E recommending that the city council proceed as described in that resolution. It's been moved by Commissioner Davidson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shmutsy. Any further discussion?
Just a question, is there anything related to the creek in this one?
There is, this is the PD district standards. It does memorialize the prior requirement for public park access with the path for the main campus, the main central portion, but does not address the new path that was being discussed.
So it just simply doesn't discuss it?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the development agreement resolution. This is a resolution in which the planning commission recommends to the city council that it adopt an ordinance approving entry into a development agreement between the applicant and the city to allow the development that would be forced tonight to go forward. This is, this would, the development agreement would essentially, you wanna throw up the five item slide, please? The benefits to the, there we go, the requested items. Those are gonna be the benefits in your, those are gonna be, again, that's what the applicant gets up at the top, the public benefits accruing to the city are listed below. So in this one, if we adopt this resolution, this is, we're making a finding.
I think there's two ways you can approach this. Again, this resolution would require four votes affirmative to move it forward. With that in mind, I think you can consider modifying this to remove it from the actual resolution reflecting the planning commission's feelings and determination that the path should remain. Alternately, you could adopt the resolution as presented with it in there and by separate motion, provide input to the council about the need to reconsider the removal of the park in their deliberations. I think those are two different approaches that you can take that you might wanna discuss.
I move that we approve adoption of the ordinance without the removal of the path. So it's approving what is here minus the piece that would allow the removal of the path from the entitlements for the other project.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the resolution in the form attached to the staff report as exhibit two F be approved.
Through the chair, I may ask, what I would also suggest, if that's where the motion goes, is we would also suggest that a whereas be added to provide that history that the one term of the development agreement was removed, was not recommended for by the commission and providing some justification for that. So if you maybe wanna elaborate, it may be in some discussion on the motion in the second as to the reasons for keeping it. I heard a couple points, but I wanna make sure I get them all. I would suggest that.
Okay, could I, before we go to that, to support that motion, I'm trying to figure out where in the resolution that language would appear. Is there anything in the recitals that says we have before us a term sheet setting forth the applicant's requested terms in the development agreement? I'm not, it's not jumping out at me.
Yeah, there's a page, the second page of the resolution, the third whereas. Two F dash two, the third whereas, on the second page of that resolution, third whereas, identifies that there is the term sheet. And then the actual terms themselves are provided after the be it resolved. And the one related to the path is city obligation two. On page two F dash five.
I see, okay. So we're, so this is removing, so specifically, I think Commissioner Lachran, your motion would delete from exhibit two F, attachment two F five, condition or term number two, remove existing condition imposed on 755 Lindar Lincoln Garage for pedestrian connection to Smart along creek for public safety. Is that, do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then my question, okay, so we've got a motion and a second. That's our understanding of the motion. Am I correct? Okay.
Yes.
That the four votes on this is not gonna affect the, detrimentally, the other approvals that we've already granted with respect to the other resolutions?
No.
And the city council is free in its greater wisdom to consider that asked by the applicant and reinstated if it so wishes?
Correct.
Is there any, any further, I guess, is there any discussion on this matter?
I think Rafi had asked for some rationale for it.
Some rationale.
And I think my rationale is that it's just unrelated to the project. It's a side benefit that's not related to this project. That building has not been, there's no plans for that building at this point. We don't know what that area will look like when that building is built. And so it seems, doesn't seem to make sense to agree to take it out now. A requirement that was put in place at the time of the approval of the entitlements.
Any other commissioner wish to add anything?
What I said was that at the time, that when it comes time to build the path, it could be done in collaboration with the city and Biomarine and some of the advocates that we heard tonight as far as ideas on how to make it a safer and nicer path.
Any other commissioners? I'll add mine, that it, that there has been a figure to demonstrate to the planning commission that the removal of the requirement to build out the path is the least restrictive method to achieve the goals for which the condition was originally imposed and that there has been no information submitted to the commission sufficient to demonstrate that the removal of the creek building condition is necessary to ensure the feasibility of the project as a whole. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Last one. Final resolution before the commission for consideration is the resolution in the form attached to the staff report as exhibit two G. In this resolution, we, the commission is recommending to the city council the approval of master use permit with conditions contained therein and findings made in support thereof, including the creation of a small subdivision that'd be the breakoff of the Whistlestop development and the approval of the remaining buildings on the Biomarine property and the approval of the build-out of the Whistlestop project. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
I moved to a...
Second, second.
Okay, Commissioner Davidson moves, Commissioner Lubomirsky seconds. Is there any discussion?
Through the chair, this is the last instance where the mitigation measure Tran One was included as use permit condition number 13. So that would have to be modified per the prior language. condition number 13, so that would have to be modified per the prior language.
Does Commissioner Davidson wish to amend her motion to include that?
I move with that addition of language.
Is that acceptable to Commissioner Lubomirsky?
It is, yes.
Any further discussion?
This is getting close, so I want to thank staff. I haven't done this and, and you guys are biomarine wonderful. And Eden and whistle-stop, thank you guys. I know it's been a long road and so I appreciate it. I think it'd be a wonderful project and we're almost there.
And I'd like to, before the room clears out, thank everyone on the staff who worked so hard on this and everyone from the applicant's teams that worked hard on this. I appreciate you coming out time after time to explain to us the, the benefits of the project and working, working so well with, with staff. And I really appreciate everyone from the public who came out to support, even if you were critical of certain aspects of it, because it makes us feel as if we're doing our job right. If we're, we're listening to you, we either get support from you or we take actions based on comments you made. So to everyone, I'm very, very thankful. So with that, if there's no further discussion, I will ask for a vote on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. I said aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have a couple more items on the agenda. Anybody's free to stick around if you would like to step into the, outside the chambers to celebrate, that would be appreciated so we can get home this evening. Next item on the agenda is the director's report.
Okay, so now we have 22 resolutions to consider. Just kidding. Just a few housekeeping updates for you. So your next meeting is on February 11th. There is the 190 mil project that is scheduled. You will also be seeing the general plan 2040 draft land use map. So one of the things that we had done is as part of the general plan update, had solicited property owners and people to apply for any potential land use changes that they may want the city to consider. We received, I believe, five such applications. So these, this is, the primary purpose is to show you those and what our recommendation is and get your concurrence. There will be other very minor changes. We are, this general plan will be consolidating and collapsing some zones, trying to simplify. Right now, we have multiple downtown land use designations that'll be collapsed into one zone. A couple other land use designations will be collapsed to kind of simplify the, the matrix. So we'll be also presenting that. So Barry will be here. He'll also give you an update of where we are with the general plan. The next DRB meeting is on 24. There are a few items on that agenda and the DRB liaison is Commissioner Lubomirsky. So you get a DRB meeting. For the council, the council is set to consider the 350 Marydale project at their, that's the 45-unit townhome project in North San Fell at their February 3rd meeting. So you previously reviewed that in December, recommended for approval, so it's going to the council for final action on February 3rd. At their last meeting on January 21st, the council continued their review of the challenges to housing kind of project that we've been doing. The primary purpose of this review and hearing was really to prioritize kind of the task list of what, what we want to do first. We can't do it all, so kind of prioritizing that. So that was the main focus of that. They also did establish some procedures for use and administration of the housing trust funds, so the affordable housing in Lufies that are collected. Right now, there is no process, procedure, criteria for use of those. And when requests come in, you know, how to deal with them. So there was some thought put into that and some sort of kind of framework and prioritization of how to deploy those monies with the concept of trying to leverage, use it to leverage the most amount of money. So if we can provide city matches that then generate additional grants or state funding, that would, you know, go better than just giving it where there's going to be no match. So if you're interested in seeing some of that discussion, you can view that on the video. And we're going to be coming back soon with some summaries of kind of what the, what's been happening, all this. Paul will be giving an update to the commission here in the next month or two to kind of get you up to speed.
Rafi, man, with that, the use of the INLU funds, that's something that the, probably not something that would come back to the commission for action. That would be a council...
Yes.
Decision.
Yeah. Little update on staffing, just so you're aware, we are, we are a little bit understaffed at this moment. So we're currently down two planners. Two of our four planners are currently, we have vacancies. We lost one planner, Alan, in October to another city and then Corone retired in mid-January. We did start a recruitment in October. We were only able to successfully make one offer. That new person will be starting May, March 1st, but we did not find a second person. So we're actually re-advertising. So we are under, a little bit overwhelmed and understaffed at this point. So we're still just trying to plug along, but just want to let you know that. So right now, it's Steve, Ally and myself that we have, and then we have a few contract planners to kind of help out, fill in the gaps.
Is there any sense that housing availability affects the applicant pool?
Yeah, yes, yes. There's lots of different factors, but that's, that's definitely one of them. And then last is the, next general plan steering committee will be on Wednesday, the 12th. Last month in January, the major discussion point was transportation, the transportation element and discussing those policies. And we are getting, kind of slowly wrapping up, pretty much gotten through most of the elements, collected, you're collecting the comments, revising the drafts and the concept would be that the steering committee will be completing its work in the spring. A draft will be produced. The EIR is almost ready to get underway and be published, which will entail a, a hearing before the commission. And again, the goal is to wrap up the general plan update and the downtown precise plan by summer of 2020. So still moving in that direction. And Commissioner Davidson has been attending the meetings and providing valuable input along with the other 24 committee members. So that concludes my report.
Is it appropriate to ask about status of prior approved projects?
Yes.
North Gate Walk?
Approved. No contact. So it stands approved, still valid approval. Haven't heard from them.
Was it an extended stay hotel where the empty lot across from Blue Wave?
Yes. We do have an application for, it's kind of a combination of Hampton and one other line. We have a formal application. It's currently incomplete, I believe. We're still waiting for some resubmital of materials, but it's, it's being, still being pursued. On, on the corner of Bellum, Castro, sorry, Francisco and Castro, the old Dodge dealership.
Any word from Costco?
No. So they took our comment, they took city comments, were very appreciative, they actually were very appreciative of the pre-app process. So, but they basically, Costco had to kind of run it up their internal flagpole on their side and then they had to discuss and decide with the Northgate Mall owners. What they'd indicated was they didn't think that they'd have any sort of direction or idea of what they're going to do until after the new year or so. We may hear something soon.
Mission and Irwin?
Mission and Irwin, Mission and Lincoln.
No, Mission, sorry, Mission, Lincoln.
Mission and Lincoln. So we have a series of projects that have, I guess I would say bifurcated permits. So Mission, Irwin, Mission and Lincoln does have a permit for some work, but they, they're not, they don't have the full building permit, the foundation and so forth. So that construction should be starting soon. They've been doing some refining to the actual building itself with some of the subterranean works. They have to still get building permits for the actual structure, but they have a foundation permit. We just issued the building permit for 809 B Street, 815 B Street, corner of B and Second. So you see, they've already started construction, started the foundation. Now they got their full building permit. Foundation permits have been issued for the hotel at Fifth and B. They don't have their actual building permit yet, but the foundation and the shoring and so forth is, they're doing that work first. So all those projects are actually underway. The, like nine units? Still an approved project. I believe it's on the market. Haven't seen a submittal. I don't, I don't have any like specific information on that one, but we, we don't have a permit issued or anything for that.
Marin Academy pool.
That's a good question. I'll have to, I'll, I have to look into that. I know they went through a pre-app and concept review. I don't know if they've submitted formally yet.
Any commission communication besides, I want to get out of here. Saying then, this meeting stands adjourned.